Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gaskarian.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is consideration of minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on April 15, 2019. Any questions or comments on those meeting minutes? If not, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's approval is passed. The next item is the annual report of the Cemetery Commission. We're pleased to have Dennis O'Brien here to walk through that report with us.
Good evening, Chairman Morris and committee members. I'm, as you mentioned, I'm Dennis O'Brien, the current commission, Chairman of the Commission. Before we get into the report, I want to have you pay attention to this first slide. That is the Gateway to the Cemetery. It's just achieved its 100th anniversary. It was dedicated in 1919, and to commemorate the centennial, we just completed a complete restoration of the stonework and the barrel gate. That was completed a short time ago. This is our mission statement. It's very important to us, seeing that the cemetery has been in existence since 1860. And it is also listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So we have a very important duty as a commission to maintain the mission, and that is through our guidance, through our sexton, and our maintain a good investment policy. This is an overview of our investment policy, which was approved by the City Council in 2008. We've abided by it since then, and through our presentation, you'll see that. Now, as we know, the, there's always volatility in the marketplace. In my opinion, that there's three steps that you have to take to manage your investments in a volatile situation. The first is abiding by your investment policy, which I believe we do. Second, you have to have a projection of your revenue stream. So you have to know what funds are coming in over the course of the next few years, next 20 or 40 years. And thirdly, you need to know what your cash flow is going to be. As I mentioned, you'll notice in our, in my presentation, we're abiding by our investment policies. In regards to projecting our revenue stream, the capacity of the cemetery currently goes out to about 40 years. So we can serve the citizens of Lake Forest for another 40 years, and we have a project that we're going to get involved in the next year and a half, that may extend that beyond that. So we have a solid revenue stream for many years to come. The last one is cash flow. If you have great revenue stream, that doesn't mean anything if you're overspending. Based on historical records, our budget for next year, we have consistently operated in the black. So we have never had to use our investment funds to fund operations. We have used the investment funds occasionally to fund capital improvements, but never for operating. And I don't foresee that happening in the near future or in the long future. So if we have experiences like we had in December of 2018, or just recently in May of 19, we have a very long horizon for managing our investments. So we don't have to react knee-jerk to any short-term changes in the marketplace. This is a showing of our investment situation as of fiscal year-end of April 30, 2019. As you can see in the lower part of the screen, the highlight, that we've seen a 13.3% increase for the fiscal year. That's very in tune with what the market did over this last period. The breakdown, the pie chart of our investments, the lower part, the light blue, is our equity investments. That is our total equity investments, which make up roughly 55% of our overall investments. A breakdown of those investments in our large-cap area makes up about 59% of those equity investments. 34% is in mid-cap, and about 7% is in small-cap. Now, keep in mind that a year and a half ago, we changed our investment strategies to again make us more conservative and moved all of our large-cap into an index fund. And the record of that index fund over the last year and a half is virtually mirrored the markets. So there hasn't been any variation. So that's about $2.7 million of our overall investments. The International Equity Fund of $1,404,000, that is also held in mutual funds, so we're not buying individual international stocks. And the fixed income is in the William Blair Bond Fund. So again, it's removing volatility in those investments. And to even further show our prudence in our investments, of the individual stocks we hold, in the mid-market and the small-market, no single investment equals more than 2% of our overall portfolio. Lastly, before we go on to the next page, I'd like to make a comment. William Blair has been our advisor for many years, and when we went through the RFP to continue the investment policy, we looked at their fee structure. And what it works out to be is it's roughly a little over 50 basis points for our overall investments. If you go out to the marketplace and ask somebody to handle your investments, you're very happy if you get that level of fees. As I mentioned, we're abiding by our investment policies. This is a breakdown of our policy ranges. You'll notice that fixed investments is in the red because it's below. We made a decision a couple of years ago that we would combine our cash and fixed-income investments as one category. Because of the low returns we're having on bonds, it didn't seem necessary to dig into the bond fund just to reduce the cash position. So with that in mind, we're at 28.2% for our fixed-income cash area, which is just below our actual target range of 30%. Our domestic equities are at 55% roughly, which is just above our target area, but within our range of 40 to 60%. And internationals is also within our target range. I'd like to keep this slide in there, because it's been almost five years since we had any debt obligation for the cemetery. The last debt we had was for Phase 1 of our improvements at the cemetery, which included the gatehouse and the memorial gardens. We hope to move into the next phase, Phase 2, in the next year and a half. The other point I'd like to make out, as I mentioned earlier, because of our revenue stream, we have plenty of capacity to serve the city and its residents. It's a misnomer by some people because we are 159-years-old, that we're like the cemetery right next to us, St. Mary's, and we've already gone beyond capacity. We have plenty of room to serve our constituents here in the city of Lake Forest. And lastly, as I mentioned before, the barrel gate and gateway was completed just recently. Once again, has been the policy of the Cemetery Commission. It was done without the use of taxpayer dollars, and we plan on keeping that in our mythology. With that, I open up questions to the committee.
Questions?
Dennis, thank you.
You're welcome.
For a very thorough report. When you talk about capacity going to 40 years, just can you just give us a little more detail on how you make that judgment? I mean, or what that number is, I guess?
We take a look at two components. You have lots, grave sites, and then you have niches. And we have a history, and we look at the last 10 years of sales of our lots, our grave lots, and it gets an average of how many we sell per year. And we use that to compare with what we have in our inventory of saleable lots. Likewise, we do the same thing with the current niches. We have almost 2,000 niches originally. We, based on projections, we have about 30 years left of niches. That's, there's starting to be a trend to move more towards niches. That's why we're looking at Phase 2 of our memorial gardens to expand the number of niches we have.
Great. Alderman Moreno?
I would first of all say congratulations for a job very well done, again.
Thank you.
The cemetery's just, the commission's done a phenomenal job, very well managed. I do have one question. It's more operational perhaps than fund-oriented, but perhaps you can provide guidance. We've been very focused on ravine management, and I don't know the geography of the cemetery well enough, but perhaps you could comment on exposure to ravine issues and water-related issues broadly?
The northern border of the cemetery is a ravine that goes all the way to the lake. About three years ago, we took care of ravine restoration at the very west end of the property that went into the St. Mary's cemetery. So that's all been taken care of. From that point, going to the lake, there is some work that needs to be done. It's a rough estimate of somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,000,000 for complete restoration. We had to do some fixes in the last year or so. If you remember the storms of last July, it was actually so strong coming through the storm drains that it popped one of our culverts and caused some major erosion, which we've gone in and done some necessary repair to keep the structure sound in the ravine. It was patchwork, but it was such that it did not add extra costs. It didn't add on to the proposed $1,000,000. So we are looking at different parts of the ravine. We have done some minor repair works of areas that we thought needed immediate attention. But on our agenda, one of our major capital improvements is the ravine, and we'll work with the city to take care of that.
Thank you.
Very good. Go ahead.
I just want to thank you for your service. Not only are you serving on the Cemetery Commission, but I also commend you for your past service to a lot of not-for-profit organizations within this community. And so, just thank you for everything you've done for all of us.
Thank you. I'd like to take all the credit, but the people I've worked with at the commission and the non-for-profits like Johnson Tell who is here, they're very easy to work with, and they're really the hard workers. And, but I'm happy to take the credit. Thank you.
Very good. Other questions?
I have one.
Yes?
Going back to the fees, and by the way, I would echo everything that's been said here, and the, I haven't seen it yet, but I'm sure the gateway looks fabulous. You mentioned the 50-basis-point fee. What's the fully-loaded fee when you include all the fees that are inside the mutual funds?
Well, one of the nice things in our relationship with William Blair is, I mentioned, the bond fund and part of the international funder in William Blair's. They do not change, charge us a management fee, so that 50-basis points do not apply to those mutual funds. So the mutual funds we're involved with, including the index fund, they're about 0.7 basis points, so it really doesn't cause a lot of extra costs for those built-in fees in mutual funds.
So the, so the mutual funds that have a management fee, they waive their asset-management fee?
Yes.
So you don't get, if it's 75 basis points inside the fund, you're not paying 125?
Correct.
In total? Okay. Great.
And the, roughly 50 basis points is the overall.
Right.
Very good. Jim?
I just had one question on the, can you just confirm the cash balance and the, and the target of the cash as a percentage of the portfolio? And is it, does it drive any yield just in certain instruments, very short-term in nature?
The cash that is in the William Blair account, that is generating, it's in a money-market account, so it does generate interest. The money's held within the city coffers is also an interest-bearing. Our total cash position is just short of $1,400,000 with, as of April 30, $1,000,000 is in hands of the city accounts, and about $360,000 with William Blair. And on an annual basis, we're working with Elizabeth Halleb. We take a look at what the account balance, cash balance is within the city account, and our needs and the reserves that we're required to maintain, and then make transfers over to William Blair to get a better return. Thank you.
Very good. Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Well done.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item, which is the investment presentation on the Police Pension Fund. Mr. Fleisch is not here tonight from the Pension Board, but Mr. Oost is here from Marquette. Welcome.
Everyone see that okay? Well, good evening, everyone. Again, name is Doug Oost from Marquette Associates. I work with the Police Pension Fund. And just start out, just reminding people who Marquette is, we're the investment consultant for the Police Pension Fund. You can see some, some statistics on us here on, on Page 2 and 3, but we've been fortunate enough to work with the board for some time now. Just at a high level, our approach primarily focused on avoiding downside risk. As a pension fund, we want to make sure that we are very mindful of the downsides in the portfolio. Use a very efficient portfolio structure. We use a lot of indexing the portfolio. About 87% or so of the equity portion of the portfolio is indexed. Trying to keep fees very low. As you know, dollars coming out of the fund for fees, that takes away from return, so we, we keep fees pretty low. Right now, all-in fees are, are lower than 50 basis points. And then, looking at unintended risks, the idea is to make sure you avoid any unintended risks. We know you have to take risks to generate some type of return, but you want to make sure you know the risks that you're taking. The asset allocation, as it stands right now, state statute mandates 35% in investment-grade fixed income. So you'll see the, the fund is right at that 35%, with the remainder split between equities and then about 10% or so in real estate. And that's been a very good diversifier for the fund over the last several years. In terms of the history, you can see two things I'd probably point out here is, one, state statutes changed over time, so they've allowed you to get a little bit more of the portfolio out of investment-grade fixed income. So you can see that in the green line going down over time. That's been one of the major changes here. The other thing I'd point out is the consistent rebalancing. And when we talk about risks and controlling the portfolio in periods of stress, rebalancing and being disciplined with your investment policy is a huge key component to that. And so, back in 2008, in the midst of the financial crisis, the board was consistently rebalancing back into the equity markets. And then conversely, right now, as the equity markets continue to hit records, we're continuing to pull money out of the equity markets and back into fixed income. Performance, you know, again, the last year, the fourth quarter definitely took a hit on performance, but from a total portfolio standpoint, the fiscal year was about 5.6%. You can see over the longer term, 7.5% over the last 10 years, and the inception numbers there, back to when, when we started keeping track of performance. But again, fund relative to what you just heard, a little bit more conservative in terms of the overall investments, just given the state statute. Market value changes here, if you look at the, the difference, this goes back against since the inception of what we have in our data. Basically, the, the fund has basically doubled in that time period. Same time period, there's been net outflows out of the fund, but fortunately, over this period, the, the investment returns have been pretty strong. Growth of a dollar chart is on Page 9, and again, just looking at it relative to its respective index, again, slightly outperforming the benchmark. I think fairly importantly here on Page 10, the return over this time period has been achieved with less risk than the benchmark. So that, we're looking at a chart not only of the pension fund versus its policy benchmark, but also against the median public pension fund. This is a universe of about $4 trillion in assets that looks at how the fund is doing relative to other public pension funds out there. You can see it's achieved basically the same amount of return as the median fund with about 30% less risk. And again, a little bit more conservative in nature in the way that the pension fund's been managed. There's a question on volatility and how the fund manages during periods of stress. I think one of them is just looking at the fourth quarter. Prior to that, the pension fund had been actively rebalancing out of equities. Again, systematically making sure you're in line with your policy targets and not letting risk assets outweigh the other parts of the, the portfolio. If you look at the fund overall, historically, it's exhibited a lot less volatility than not only its peer group, but its benchmark as a whole. Thinking about it in relation to the equity markets, if you look at the relative risk to the equity markets, it's a measure of beta that just looks at the systematic risk of the pension fund. It's 0.4, meaning that as the equity markets move, the pension fund's going to be less susceptible to those movements. And then specifically in the fixed-income portion of the portfolio, the active fixed-income manager here is much more conservative than the broad market. They're underweight to corporate bonds right now, much higher quality. Again, with the market hitting all-time highs, a little bit counterintuitive, but that portion of the portfolio is really meant to preserve principal, and that's really the point that it serves in the portfolio. So, again, a pretty conservative methodology overall. Fees here on Page 12, just to wrap up. The total underlying fees for all the funds is about 0.31%, and then, once you add in the custodial fee and our fee, all-in, it's about 0.48%. So, again, slightly under that, that 50-basis-point range. And with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
Open up for questions.
Yeah. Thanks. Doug, can you talk a little bit about the policy benchmark? I mean, what that is?
So, the policy benchmark takes the existing allocations and puts a representative index to it, and then it tracks it over time.
So an actual index, or it's an actual index?
It's a, it's an index. So the, the deviation that you see right now from it is primarily from the fixed-income manager that has been lagging its benchmark.
Okay.
So, all it does is over time tracks relative to that benchmark.
And you've, and since inception, you've used the same policy benchmark?
It, so it changes when, if the fund ever changes its target benchmark or the target policy, so as the state statute changed and allowed more in equities, then the underlying benchmark will change and allow more equities.
I wondered. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Other questions? Alderman Moreno?
Thank you. On the policy changes over time, would you comment on where you think that might go? Will we still stay at 35% fixed income? And is it also a function of the total value of the portfolio? Does, does the fixed-income allocation go down as the amount of assets goes up? Is there a catalytic point, a change point?
Yeah, the, as far as I've heard, that state statute requirement will stay the same at 35%, so I don't know if there's any discussion on movement there. So I think that's probably going to stay the same. In terms of how the pension fund manages to it, you know, trying to hit a 7% return with that much an investment-grade fixed income is pretty tough. So when we've run our asset allocation studies, it's typically pointed towards keeping it at that 35%, which is the minimum that we're allowed to go to.
Thank you.
Alderman Bushman?
Couple of questions, Doug. On the last chart you have here, current fees, you indicate, no, the one you just had up there. Current fees for custodial fee and investment consulting fee, and then a not-applicable. Could you explain that if we're trying to compare, you know, the expense ratio that we have with you folks and industry average?
Sure.
Do they have custodial fees and investment consulting fees?
We don't, so the investment management fee, there's a, there's a database called E-Vestment that we're able to gather all those fees and show in apples-to-apples comparison. There really isn't one for custodial or, or consultant. If there were, we'd, we'd certainly put it on there. It just, we're not aware of one that's out there.
Is it because there are no such fees in the industry, or that they're not identified and captured?
It's just not identified. It's, it's just not captured. It would require a data provider to go out and actually gather up all that information, and no one's, no one's done it yet.
Okay. And in terms of your investment portfolio, I think you had around 10% in real estate. Do you see that as an appropriate sort of investment at that level, or do you envision changes one way or another in that?
Yeah, so, it, it's a good point, because that 10% actually does come out of the equity part that the state allows you to invest in. And the reason we like it is because it provides great amount of diversification to the fund. So, you know, in a year like last year, when the equity markets were down fairly large, the, the real estate portion of the portfolio was actually up over 7%. And it's a, it's a very good diversifier over the last several years. We think the, the level will most likely continue. Expected returns are coming down a little bit, but they are across all asset classes.
Is it a domestic real estate market you look at, or global?
This is, this is a, a domestic, it's principal is the manager. It's a broadly diversified US real estate fund.
Very good. Other questions? Could you go back to the returns slide that you had? Right. In our model, our actuarial model, we use a 7% return assumption.
Correct.
So, just looking at this, that seems reasonable over the last three years, but do you have any comments on the adequacy of a 7% assumption?
Yeah, I mean, certainly you've been able to hit it over the last 10 years. Once you add in the financial crisis, looking at that inception number, that's a 12-year number, I think, and that obviously, haven't been able to hit it quite, you know, looking forward, I think one of the big concerns is just the last 10 years have been so strong, and the next 10 years might not be. And then, given the 35% mandated in fixed income with yields in the 2% to 3% range, it may be somewhat difficult to, to achieve that number, but, again, we've been, we've been saying that for a few years, and market continues to run, but, you know, it's, it's something we're very mindful of, and I think it might be a little bit more challenging than the last 10 years.
Okay. Other questions? If not, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. Going on, we will turn to the FIRE Pension Board investment presentation. Mr. Paul Pugliese and Mary Tomitnik.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Paul Pugliese. I'm a member of your Fire Department, probably serving for almost 28 years, and one of the other functions I have is being on the Pension Board. And I've been able to serve alongside Mary Tomitnik, who will do a little presentation for you here, and hopefully be able to answer all the questions and concerns you might have. If we don't have any answer for you, we will get the answer for you.
There you go.
And if you so choose, as I was talking with Alderman Morris earlier, next week, next Thursday, the 25th, we have a regularly scheduled Pension Board meeting, 5 o'clock at Lake Forest Station 2 in the basement. So with that, I will...
I don't know how. Sorry. [laughter] While he's doing that, I'll get started. Thank you very much for having us tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. So... Okay. Great. So I, I just wanted to share with you our experience. We're very grateful to have worked with the FIRE Pension Fund in the city for many, many years, roughly 20 at this point. And I'm part of a, a team of professionals that are located in Deerfield and Barrington, and we oversee about $7 billion in assets that are diversified with many... and we oversee about $7 billion in assets that are diversified with many retirement plans, both public and private sector, as well as a number of nonprofit institutions. So, we bring a lot of experience to the table. I would also like to mention that my, one of the other roles that I have is to be the lead for the Continuing Education Committee for the Illinois Government Finance Officers Association, the Committee on Pensions. And in April, we had our most recent Pension Institute, and Elizabeth Hollab spoke. She was part of a panel of finance directors, and it was a standing-room-only crowd. People were actually sitting on the floor. And what was just so wonderful was that Elizabeth was able to share your story. And it was really incredible. We're still getting positive feedback. So, as I put on my resident hat, I would like to say thank you, and my professional hat, I would like to say thank you, because tackling this very, very complex issue of pensions, you had the vision to do it, the strength to do it, to pull together many parties, and you're giving many other communities hope. So, thank you, and stay tuned. It's still, you know, a lot more to accomplish, but we're getting there, right? We're making progress. So, with that, thank you, we'll go to the FIRE Pension Fund. And from their investment policy, the emphasis is still the same on total return with a combination of capital appreciation and dividend and interest income, with the objective of long-term growth of principal while avoiding excessive risk. The year ending, fiscal year ending April 2019 was a little bit over 8.5% return, with fund assets of slightly over $37 million. The equity allocation was just a tad under the state maximum at 63%, and the fixed income portfolio at 37. So, on everyone's mind is volatility, right? As came up a couple of times, 2018 gave us our fair share of it, and of course, a little bit more as we go into 2019. And at one point, we were down almost 20% for equities in 2018. But when you take a look at volatility longer term, what we're experiencing is, I'm sorry to say, kind of average, really. And we, because of where we are in the economic cycle, we would anticipate that to continue. So, with that being said, the good news is, the longer-term prognosis is good. We also feel that near-term returns will be challenging. We feel that the long-term return for an allocation such as a FIRE Pension Fund is just a hair under your actuarial assumption. 6.9% is what we're looking for, for the 20-year expected return. Shorter term, however, it's headwinds and a lower number. We believe we are in a long-term bull market that's going to have these fits of short-term cyclical bear, of which we completed one most recently. But again, the good news is, the long term, we feel, is positive. The way that we mitigate risk at the FIRE Pension Fund is to have a balanced portfolio. Obviously, we talked about the equity and the fixed balance. We also include some liquid alternative investments, which is a covered call writing strategy that the fund has had in place for a long time. The other thing that we do is to be very sensitive to the liquidity needs of the pension fund. And by that, I mean, we don't ever want to be in a position where we have to liquidate some longer-term investments to meet a short-term need. So, we really keep a very close eye on that. And right now, when one takes a look at the income that's being generated from the pension fund, from dividends and interest income, as well as contributions, we're still positive in terms of the cash flows. But, again, we'll continue to monitor that. We utilize a process of active managers as well as passive managers, and our rationale with our active managers is to select ones that have exhibited outperformance in down markets. So, roughly 40% of the equity portfolio is passive right now, and so, when we went through the fourth quarter, our active managers definitely added, the fourth quarter of 2018, our active managers definitely added value on the downside. So, that's a strategy that I expect we would continue. And that's all of my prepared comments, so I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Alderman Moreno?
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Tominek. I hope I say your name properly. You've been really instructive and insightful in dialogue, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I wanted to peel back the active management in a down cycle or downturn. What does that mean? Does that mean that you, you're buying, or you're selling, or both, or what does it mean?
So, the, it's mutual funds that we use that have exhibited historical outperformance in down markets, and there are a few ways that they will do that. Some will invest in companies only that have the strongest of balance sheets. So, they may underperform a tad when the markets are going up, kind of like the way they have been this year. But when the markets start to get weak, those stocks within the portfolio tend to do better. Some managers will also increase their cash position within the mutual fund. So, one of them will, in difficult times, raise cash, I want to say, to roughly 15% of the portfolio. So, there are a variety of ways within, but we primarily focus on managers that invest in companies with strong balance sheets.
And if I may, just a follow-up question. Based on what you have seen us do, how do we, how do we think about what others are doing with management of FIRE Pension Funds, and what might we think about doing differently?
Well, we do keep an eye on that, particularly as my role with the Illinois Government Finance Officers Association. And we are, I feel, also in a leadership position with the allocation and the strategy, working with, you know, a balanced portfolio, utilizing the income off the portfolio to meet pension payouts, pension liabilities. The state statute highly limits a lot of choices that we have, so, you know, so much of it goes back to the asset allocation. And so certainly, the allocation could be moved down with equities if we were in a sustained long-term type bear market. That certainly would be something I think the board would consider. But it is one that is evaluated by the board on a regular basis and fine-tuned as necessary. So, if there are things that are timely, or strategies that are being utilized that could benefit the fund over the long term, those would certainly be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good presentation.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the part of the presentation that Assistant Director Hall will lead us through in terms of the budget calendar.
Included in your packet tonight is a proposed budget calendar for fiscal 2021. It is basically the same as previous year. It includes the budget meetings for March and November. And just a note that the November budget meeting is a Tuesday this year, and these are off-city council meeting nights. The November meeting is on a Tuesday because of the holiday on Monday. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's just a high-level overview right now.
Questions?
I have a question for the City Manager. Jason, is this process, does it remind you of Skokie? Is it better? Is it different? Are there any things that you talked about with the team? Just shed some light on external perspectives. Just kind of curious about your...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd, in a broad sense, say the process looks pretty similar. You know, I think for all of us in this line of work, the budget cycle almost never ends. But I know, at a staff level, we'll probably be having some internal conversations about capital planning and some other aspects of the budget preparation process, so, probably more to come in the months ahead. But, no, I think it looks, you know, pretty routine and standard.
Very good. I think we need to have a voice vote to approve the calendar, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion passes for the 2021 budget calendar. The next item is the OpenGov check register demonstration. So, Assistant Director Hall.
As the city has been working on their transparency on our website to give residents a better look at how the city is functioning, we've formatted a new tool using OpenGov that we would like to just present for feedback from the council, so that we can see if we're going in the right direction. This is a check register that is just, we're doing it from fiscal '20 forward, so just starting May of 2019. Because of the software conversions, we have a very consistent data. The check register right now is May, June, and July, and this is similar to the other reports we've used OpenGov for. Right now, we have it so it is on a summary basis, so you can see the different vendors that we have paid through the month in summary format, and it shows like the higher-paid ones at the top, and then broken down. And then you can also get on a details button, so it'll actually show the individual check registers, to show each check date, the check amount, the payee, and also a brief description of what the purchase was for. It also has some search features where you can put in a date range, so you can do a month, a year, a quarter. You can also sort from dollar amount, so if you want to see higher-paid check registers or check amounts, you can see those. And if you want to just go by individual payees, you can also sort on those. So, it's an intuitive check register to just try and get more transparency of the checks that the city is issuing. And right now, it is not on the city website, but it's just for review. And for previous check registers, we still have the treasurer's report, reports that are on the website that sort the vendors by either alphabetical or by dollar amount per the previous fiscal years. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dan, can you just remind us how, I guess, is this going to be on the website?
It will, it can be on, it will be on the website. We just wanted to preview it first, just to get feedback.
So, when people go to the city website, once we get to the city website, how do we get to this?
It would be on the transparency page that the city already has.
Quick links up on the...
So, the quick links, okay, okay. And to the transparency, and that's going to take us to OpenGov?
Right. There'll be a link on there for the check register, like there are for like the budget report and the expenditures.
And that's for any citizen who wants to go and take a look at that?
Yes, but we have not published it yet, just wanted to give a preview.
Each month, I get a check register, there's generally 300 to 500 checks in it, and I go through it, I sort it different ways, and so I hope that you'll take advantage of this going forward to do the same thing. It's very interesting. Alderman Moreno?
Is it also possible to, for any check written, to view the notation for purpose?
The check memo on the FAR column gives a brief description. You can even sort this one by, like, you can type in like office supplies, or construction too, and it kind of would narrow it down a little bit, too.
Got it. Thank you.
Alderman Bushman?
How current will this be, once it gets up and running, you know, for when the check is written to when it'll be incorporated into the OpenGov website?
We can either do it, you know, right after the checks are issued that Friday, or it can be done monthly, just depending on the preference.
You'd vision that it would be just a current, as opposed to like monthly updated on a monthly basis?
Yes, because we can do it weekly, and then have, so then it's current that week.
Okay. Impressive.
Dan, is this being done by a lot of cities? How commonplace is this at this point?
We've done, I've looked at different city websites, and a lot of communities do put the check register out there. With our previous software, it was a lot more difficult to get the data out, but with the new software, it's, we found an easy report to get the information.
So, if you change filters here, what is that going to do on the FAR?
This one?
Mm-hmm.
It is, it's more where we generate the report from. This is the demo version. So, it would be set to show with this view tab when launching from the website.
So, you're not going to have an option of filters?
Right. Well, the filters are actually...
You said it.
Down by, down below there, to be able to sort.
Very good. Questions? Alderman Bushman?
One more question. I assume checks written for personnel matters would not be shared under this arrangement. What checks would not be, or what payments by the city would not be covered under this OpenGov program?
These are all voucher checks, so just the regular accounts payable checks, so no payroll checks are on here. It would just be regular voucher checks.
But that would pick up payments pursuant to any capital project, because I do see some of the major work here from Keno and AECOM being capital projects. Okay, so this, it'd be the voucher system recorded. Any other exceptions, then, that would not be picked up here besides the payroll?
I suppose property purchases might not show up here, maybe if there was a settlement of some kind for some issue.
Well, I assume legal settlement, particularly if it's under a confidentiality agreement, would be excluded.
And who's seen that those are excluded?
We would have to review that, you know, if something sensitive did come up, to make sure that it's brought out of the Excel, it's an Excel file that's uploaded. So, we would just have to make sure noted that if it is a confidential payment, ahead of time, just to make sure that it is not uploaded, because it's an automatic download from our software.
So, there has to be someone screening it?
I would imagine Finance Director Hollab could oversee that process to ensure that's being done.
Correct.
And this will also include all of the wire transfers also, for like our bond payments would be included in this also.
Very good. Questions? If not, we'll move on, and so stay there. We come down to other business. The three items, the flash report, the city council agenda for the 15th tonight, and the analysis of the fiscal year '20 budget. Just open up all three of those to questions. Alderman Moreno, I think, last time you had asked for some information on the rollovers and such, so there's a lot of detail in the package tonight, so you may find that adequate, but if not...
Thank you very much, yes.
Any other questions? Very good. Any questions from the audience? Is an opportunity for anyone to come up and address the Finance Committee. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? Nay? Motion passes. We're going to take about a five-minute break to adjust and get ready for the city council meeting, so I'll take a break, and we'll be back for, in about, a little before 7:30, for the start of the city council meeting. for start of the city council meeting.
Welcome to the Monday, July 15, 2019 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Rummel?
Here.
Alderman Preschlack?
Here.
Alderman Goshkarian?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, biddy. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I never know which way to go. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. First item on the agenda is the reports of the city officers and comments by the mayor, and I have a couple tonight. First of all, I want to let everybody know and commend Fire Chief Pete Seabert. He recently achieved a designation with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, U.S. Fire Administration, National Fire Academy. It is a three-year intensive executive fire officer program that further enhances, it enhances his leadership skills and capabilities, although he's already demonstrated that mightily, and is a reflection of his commitment to the continuous improvement and the development of continuity plans for the city's fire department. This is, for those of you who don't know, this is a very intensive program that Chief Seabert completed, you know, while on full active duty. It's sort of the equivalent of a firefighter's MBA, and he's to be commended for putting forth the extra effort to get that designation, and so thank you, Chief Seabert, and congratulations. Another item of interest in the long line of wonderful things about Lake Forest, last week, some of you may have seen, the Deer Path Inn was named the top resort hotel in the Midwest by Travel and Leisure Magazine in a reader, in a reader poll. Last year, to put that in perspective, last year's winner was the Grand Hotel on Mackinac Island, so that's some pretty rare company, and we're sitting here 30 miles from Chicago, not, not a three-day boat ride away. So it's just another one of Lake Forest's many treasures that's being recognized, as this happens a lot, and we need to keep an eye on that, because I think we take these things for granted, and they just don't exist in other communities on the North Shore or anywhere else in the country. So congratulations to Matt Barber and his amazing team that he's built. It's really been spectacular what's been accomplished there. And then a reminder that Lake Forest Day is coming up, the 100th anniversary of the American Legion of our, I think it's our American Legion post, the parades, the 100th anniversary of our American Legion post. The parade starts at 10:00 on Wednesday, August 7th. The carnival is Tuesday evening and Wednesday, and for more information, visit lakeforestday.com, all one word. And then the next item I wanted to place on the agenda was a little review by the Friends of Park and Recreation on the Fourth of July celebration.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Alderman. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Rick Amos, the festival and firework chairman from the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Thank you, Sally, and good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and address you this evening. For those of you that were able to attend our event on the Fourth of July, you survived the heat and the humidity. It was a rather warm evening, but it was a successful evening, and so I just wanted to touch briefly on some of the highlights of the event and take any questions you may, you may have. This was our 14th year of the event, and we dodged the bullet in terms of weather. For those of you that were able to attend, it was a warm and humid day, but we didn't get any rain, and a lot of our neighbors to the north and to the south of us couldn't say that, so we were, we were very thankful for that. But we had a good turnout, as you can see from the photos. You know, this year's event was on a Thursday evening, which always is a bit of a challenge for us, because depending upon the day and the weather, some folks in our community have the advantage of taking maybe a four or five-day weekend, so our crowds were a little lighter than normal, and certainly the heat probably impacted the crowds. And so we had about 5,000 folks on site during the day, which, which was actually quite lovely from an attendance perspective, because you were free to move around and get through the vendors into the kids' games area without, without too much of confusion or hassle. You also may recall, we had a lot of rain this summer in May and certainly in June, and right up to the event, we had a considerable amount of rain, so from the site plan that we presented to you earlier in the spring, we had to make some modifications the day of, because the fields were just too wet. We didn't want to damage the field, so that caused some confusion for a few, few folks, but we, every year, we learn something new from the event in terms of how to organize it and make it a better, a better event. I would like to thank the Alderman and the city council. I mean, it's without your support, you know, if we didn't have it, we wouldn't be able to do that, so thank you for stepping up and helping us make this such a successful event. Also want to thank the city manager and his team, and Sally Swarthout and her team. You know, on a, on a national holiday, when we all get to spend time with our families, we have about 86, 87 people working to put that event on that don't get to be with their families, and so we certainly recognize them and thank them for the commitment they make. And again, our friends group gets the recognition for the event, but it's really the city staff, the fire department, the park and recreation, street sanitation, forestry, and certainly Sally and Joe and their team that, that are the heroes of this event. They really, they get to make it work. I get to come here and talk to you and address you, but without them, I'd be in a lot of trouble, so let's give credit where credit is due. But we had a great event. We're still working on the numbers in terms of the fundraising. The music this year was Liverpool Legends, which is a Beatle tribute band, and then we had a country top 40 band. We were able to work in the high school a cappella group that performed two songs in between, in between the event, and they were great. So again, just a, just a great event, and then, and then Bellicane was our headliner performer, and I think people enjoyed, enjoyed that music. Certainly, they were a high-energy, family-friendly act, which we thought was appropriate this year. Maybe last year, if you recall, we had kind of a classic arena band that was interesting for some, but some thought it was a little on the edge, to say the least, so we try and please everybody in their musical taste.
We'll do it.
But we get a lot of feedback from that. And then certainly, we'd, we'd like to thank Lake Forest Bank. They've been a proud supporter of this event from the beginning, the local community and the local staff there certainly contribute to the event, and certainly without them also, this, this wouldn't be possible. And before I close and take any questions, we will have the Fall Festival on September 21st. It'll be right behind this building in, in the, in the parking lot. We're already beginning to work on the plans for that event, and so there'll be food, beverages available. We're also, we're also going to expand the kids' area this year to make it even more family-friendly. We got some feedback last year that when mom and dad are having some fun listening to music, they want something for the kids to do, so we're gonna, we're gonna expand that area and make that more inclusive. And also, it's kind of a drop-in event. You can come in, you can come out throughout the day and throughout the evening, so it's a little, it's a little easier to navigate for folks that want to ride their bikes or bring strollers or drive into town and park, park for that event. So if you haven't thought about it, keep September 21st open on your calendar. It should be, should be a good day. With that, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Questions? I'll just speak for myself. I was there. It was delightful and just very pleasant evening. The weather was not so bad. I thought it was pretty comfortable, and, and the headliner band was really, really good, so.
They were fun.
Had not heard of them before, but I certainly enjoyed, enjoyed their show. And then the fireworks were great, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all the work you guys put into making these things happen. This is yet another Lake Forest treasure, so.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to personally thank Rick for all the work that he does. It's true, it's a big team effort with, I think, the Friends of Lake Forest Park and Recreation grabbing a little bit of the headline, but the Parks and Rec staff, public safety staff and the likes, but Rick is really the center on that, that whole wheel. There are a lot of spokes, and Rick works tirelessly on this event as well as the Fall Festival, and thank you very much, Rick, for what you do. You're indispensable and don't know what we'd do without you.
Well, thank you. Glad to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
One last thing that I'll just do on the fly here, I just wanted to remind everybody that next Thursday, the 25th, is the annual Lake Forest Car Show, which benefits melanoma research, and it's at, I think it starts at 5:00 and goes to about 8:00 on Thursday evening in Market Square, and it's in conjunction with the Thursday night concert, so it's really a fun event, and, you know, anybody has a car, you can just register online and, and participate, so hopefully see everybody there. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Great, thank you, and mayor, and members of city council. Good evening. As part of our ongoing community spotlight presentations, I'm pleased to introduce tonight John Centell, president and CEO of Lake Forest Open Lands. John is here to update the city council and the community on all of the happenings and goings-on with Lake Forest Open Lands this year.
Got it. Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It's my privilege to serve as the president of Lake Forest Open Lands and represent our Board of Governors and the many members throughout our community. Thank you for the opportunity to give an update to you and to the public on some of the many good things happening at Lake Forest Open Lands. And although many of you may be familiar with Lake Forest Open Lands, I thought I'd highlight some of our programs and events happening to help our community connect with nature, provide an update on McCormick Ravine, and share a little bit about our moon marketing campaign that invites our community to think outside and experience the outdoors right where we live. I think we'd all agree that our. I think we'd all agree that our open spaces and our historic landscapes contribute to our unique sense of place as a community. Not unlike the college or Market Square, the nature preserves and vistas we all share help to define and differentiate our community and contribute greatly to our quality of life. Over the decades, our mission really has not changed, but in many ways, the work we do to preserve open space and connect people with nature is more relevant today than ever before. I doubt that the founders of Open Lands a half-century ago anticipated the importance that our preserved landscapes would have for our community today, not just for their beauty or for the way they anchor and make our community so special, but today, we recognize the broader role these places have in terms of helping our city manage storm water and improving our water quality, maintaining a green community, enhancing public health and wellness, increasing our property values, not to mention their contribution to biodiversity and contributing to a healthy planet outside of our borders. You may have read the recent studies that quantify the very real health benefits of getting outside in nature just 25 minutes a day, whatever your age. And visiting one of our six, soon-to-be-eight, nature preserves is just minutes away wherever you live in town. They're north, south, east, west, and centrally located in our community, and we're working to connect these places together throughout our community and beyond. I can't think of any other place in the Chicago area that has this type of resource. It's an asset that truly sets us apart and demonstrates that nature and outdoors and healthy living and wellness are the very core of who we are as a community. And that's a good place to be, and it's something that we believe will stand the test of time. A quick look at Open Lands by the numbers. We've preserved 800 acres of land so far. Our preserves are open seven days a week, 365 days a year, with 14 miles of hiking trails and incredible vistas. We educate over 2,000 students a year, and we're very proud that one in five households in our community are members of our organization, and we receive over 6,500 hours of volunteer service annually. And I also like to remind people that because we're an independent nonprofit organization, we provide all of this to the public without the need for any tax dollars. In the hustle and bustle of our daily lives, it's easy to forget how fortunate we are to live in a place with countless natural wonders all around us, a place with an unexpectedly diverse array of native plants and animals and birds, and some rare, threatened, and even endangered, like Middle Fork Savannah, a globally threatened ecosystem. We tend to overlook how interconnected we all are with nature and that we live in a unique community that is an important link in support of our natural world beyond our borders. So I thought I'd just have a little fun tonight, and a little quick quiz. Speaking of biodiversity, I thought I'd share some of the incredible species we've seen in Lake Forest over the years. And of these species, which one has not been seen within our borders yet? You can see them on the screen there. You've got the mink and the red fox, and piliated woodpecker, bald eagle, steelhead trout, whooping crane, mountain lion or cougar, and a pink caddy did. Well, I won't put anyone on the spot on this one, but if you thought steelhead trout, you're right. And I will tell you, I don't think that's too far down the road with the way McCormick Ravine is coming. So whatever your age or interest, there is something for everyone to enjoy at Open Lands, whether you're an artist, or a birdwatcher, a dog walker, or a cross-country skier. We encourage you to enjoy nature. In fact, we recently acquired a special golf cart that allows seniors or those physically challenged to take a tour in a couple of our preserves, and this has been a very popular amenity. We believe that time in nature is not just leisure time, but an investment not just in our children's health, but everyone's health and quality of life, which is why we're so focused on environmental education for everyone. For example, we provide programs to students, all students from District 67 and the day school for grades K through 5th for field trips during the year. Our outdoor summer program camps for kids K through 6 are in full swing, and they focus on fun, interactive, experiential activity in our nature preserves outside. Our award-winning Center for Conservation Leadership Program that reaches high schoolers, rising high schoolers, not just from Lake Forest, but surrounding communities, is now in its 10th year. Our well-attended Great Lakes Great Issues Series in partnership with Gorton was well-received this past year and will continue to host community lectures and environmental films this year with nationally-known experts. We love our volunteer land stewards of all ages, also known as our Echo Crew members. Everyone has fun, makes a difference, and you can enjoy learning in the field and helping nature by participating on Community Restoration Days, from battling invasive species to helping monitor our bluebird boxes around the community. And incidentally, Lake Forest has become quite a hotbed for birdwatchers in our region. On Friday each month, excuse me, we invite people for some casual conversation, conservation conversations at Melody Farm, a great way to get outside with friends, learn from an expert, enjoy nature, and get a few nibbles, and these have been very popular. And of course, when the chill of fall is in the air, we invite everyone to enjoy our community tradition of celebrating our open spaces with bagpipes and bonfire this year, held on Sunday, September 29th. I also wanted to mention that we had a successful native tree and plant sale in partnership with the city this year. This joint event results in countless trees and native plants being planted in private residences, continuing to re-green our community and meet the goals of our city's Sustainability Plan. We've also been working individually with residents to make their yards more resilient with rain gardens and native species, given all the water we've seen this spring. And I wanted to make a special thank you to Cory and his team at the city for their incredible help this year at the native plant sale. Now I'd like to give a quick update on another exciting endeavor we're working on, McCormick Ravine. As you know, McCormick officially transferred to Open Lands this past March, at which point in time, we began to fully invest in our nature preserve improvement and infrastructure plan. The McCormick property has never had any formalized or engineered access for residents, so this is a big task. The design of such a comprehensive effort is substantial, but well underway. Some of the items being designed and engineered include trails, boardwalks and bridges, and a lovely and inviting entrance off of Sheridan Road. We're very pleased with how the Army Corps Restoration Project has turned out, and if you've had a chance to see in person or pictures, you'll see how beautiful McCormick is becoming. All species are responding incredibly well. More rare plants are flowering and reproducing due to the sunlight in the ravine, and the rare, local genetic material unique to our area is being propagated and reseeded. Our goal is to capture the user experience of the dramatic natural ravine when you first enter the nature preserve off of Sheridan, not unlike the feeling when you get when you visit and first enter any of our other nature preserves. This is a challenging site to work at. We have a 115-foot elevation drop from Sheridan Road to the lake, a lot of storm water in the site, as well as rare and threatened species, so we will take our time to ensure we don't do any harm. For example, even if we had plans approved this year, we'd still be waiting to begin work due to the rain and the high lake levels. The question we get a lot is this: When will McCormick be open to the public? We anticipate that we'll have all our designs completed by the appropriate regulatory agencies this year and begin construction after McCormick camp ends next year. The Army Corps project brought close to $3.5 million investment into the site. We anticipate an additional seven figures plus being invested in preserve infrastructure and amenities. And what about those fish? I can report, we've already seen fry in the confluence area you're looking at right here. They're starting to find McCormick. It's all very exciting. For a conservation organization like Open Lands, it is really a privilege to undertake this work, and we thank you for the opportunity to restore this truly special place for our entire community. We're also excited by our new marketing campaign, Think Outside. You may have seen this lighthearted campaign in print, or social media, or video, or our city signboards, at least I hope you have. Think Outside is really created as a call to action, to encourage people to reengage in nature, not just get outside, but to embrace the way we think about and experience nature in our lives. Our research found that although Lake Forest Open Lands and the nature preserves we steward are greatly valued in our community, there's an opportunity to expand the invitation to explore Open Lands and to embrace how a connection to nature benefits us all. The messaging and locally-produced imagery of our Think Outside campaign is designed to reengage people in the wonder of our open spaces and the wild places found right in our backyard. We also think that this messaging has a very positive halo effect on our city's marketing efforts, as Think Outside helps to elevate the fact that our access to and care for nature is a key reason that Lake Forest is a great place to live. Some of the ads you may have seen add a bit of whimsy to the message, such as hundreds of acres of selfie sticks, less screen time, more green time, join the neighborhood watch, all intended to increase awareness and get people thinking about the outdoors in our We've also extended our message to social media and to our city signboards. So when we say "Think Outside," it's intended to lift our entire community up, to embrace the changing tide and attitudes towards nature and the outdoors, and to offer a rally cry or a badge that we can all wear proudly. It's really a statement that our community cares about nature and the legacy of our landscapes. We think this especially appeals to younger audiences who care greatly about healthy living and being a part of purpose-driven communities. So in closing, the entire staff of Lake Forest Open Lands on the screen invites everyone to think outside. I hope to see each of you down the trail soon. So I thank you for your time and your support and the opportunity to share an update this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions from the City Council?
Have any questions? I just want to thank you for an astounding job. It's really remarkable what's happened over the last 10 years. It's amazing. Thank you.
And maybe to preempt the Mayor and earlier comments about the gems that we have here in Lake Forest, you are certainly one of those for what you have, what you provide, what you do, what you share with our community. So thank you, Open Lands. You do an excellent job, and you're most appreciated, and certainly one of the outstanding gems we have here to enjoy.
Thank you, Alderman. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
There are no more questions, we'll move on. I would like to officially add this to my, this night's list of Lake Forest treasures. I mean, what a gift, so thank you.
Great, thank you, John. Moving on, to a standing item that's been in the City Manager's report, I've asked our Public Works Director, Mike Thomas, to provide an update on the Hughes Gateway Reconstruction Project, and I've also asked our Director of Recreation to provide an update on beach access protocols.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, I'd like to present our monthly update on the North Beach Ravine and the Hughes Gateway, formerly known as the North Beach Access Road. The ravine restoration is going along very well. The private homeowners, their wall has been completed now for a few months, but you can see various landscaping efforts that we're working on, on both properties. There's a significant slope, somewhat hard to see, but we've been challenged by working on that slope, bringing in a good amount of dirt, the right dirt this time, and the correct plants. And at the bottom right, you can see Cliff Miller, our landscape architect, placing the very specific locations of all these individual plants. There's a huge number of them. They actually are working on it as we speak till the sun goes down tonight. We did the final grading. We finished about 7:00, and we're going to try and get these plants in. It is very hot. We've got to get these plants in the ground quickly. Road restoration is going very well. We've brought in about 25,000 yards of material. We've installed, or I should say, the contractor has installed 500 feet of French drain and perforated drain up top. If you remember the sand seam where this whole thing started last year, that continues to spill water out, so we are collecting that water, bringing it down to our storm sewer system. And then the sanitary sewer, there's actually a 12-inch sanitary sewer that comes from Lake Road, goes down through the ravine, and underneath the old road, and goes the entire length of the beach. We obviously needed to relocate that. We could not have that sitting under 25,000 yards of CA6. So we are in the process of moving that under the roadway. The challenge is, that's not like all of our sanitary sewers in Lake Forest that are by gravity. This one's under pressure, so it's taken a good amount of thought process for us to figure out, how in the world are we going to do this live? But we are doing it, so. Upcoming work, the work is progressing on as scheduled. They will do the storm connection from where they're collecting the water up top. They'll bring it down and connect it to our storm sewer. The parking lot is going to be reconstructed completely, so the CA6, the stone from that parking lot, is going to be reused and put on top to basically bring that hill of stone, that embankment, to meet it up with the table land. That should be beginning sometime this week, but this is our last hurrah of getting all the stone in and matching final grade. After that, the contractor will bring that entire slope to final grade, a two-to-one slope, and they'll also bring topsoil in. We have about 1,600 yards of black dirt to bring in, so about 80 semis worth, and that will again occur once we have final grade on both embankments. Then the parking lot, we'll put the first layer. Peter Baker has been contracted with Kino. Baker will come in, put the first layer of asphalt down. From there, we will do the concrete road and the concrete curb, and then the final lift of asphalt will go on, and then the wooden guardrail. So it doesn't look like a lot of items, but there's still a good amount of work still to be done. We're feeling very confident that we're going to be done by the deadline, hopefully a little bit earlier, if the weather continues to cooperate. So here are just some aerial shots Mike Borkowski took for us this morning. I know it just looks like one big, huge hill of stone, and it's hard to see some things, but the new roadway is in that area. This was this morning, working on the rerouting of the sanitary sewer. You can see the black sanitary sewer pipe where we're going to reroute. That actually where those backhoes and the unloader, that is the new road, so you can make that out. And about 5 feet in from the embankment is where the sanitary sewer is being rerouted. And that is just another picture of the sanitary sewer. So everything is going very well. We're working again concurrently both on the ravine as well as the roadway, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mike, would you go back two pictures to the one where we first see, yes, that one? I just, I think this is a wonderful chance to remind ourselves that this is a public-private partnership that made this happen, and I believe we are looking right there in that picture at the trees that would have been gone
Yes.
if we had had to do a different approach to this. So this is an example of when we put ourselves, you know, when we ask for help, we don't normally do that here. Usually, our public-private partnerships are something that we plan very carefully and methodically, but in this case, we didn't have that choice, but we wanted to save those trees, and this is going to be pretty spectacular, and thanks to your work, but also thanks to all the people that were part of making this happen, because it's, thank goodness.
The fun thing about all this is it's a big team effort. There's guys from forestry streets, engineering, there's many, many city departments working on this, working well with the contractor, Cliff Miller, and that's actually what makes it pretty fun to do. Stressful at times, and we have our arguments on-site at times, but it's turning out to be a really good project, so we're very happy with it.
Did we know that sanitary sewer was there?
We did. And actually, the sanitary sewer was installed in 1925.
Saw that note on the bottom.
That's the other reason. We did not feel comfortable having a pipe from 1925 sitting under 25,000 yards of CA6, because if it broke...
But we always were planning on, we always were planning to replace it.
Yes, without question. It's just, what, the challenge came to us was that we didn't realize it was under pressure, and that changes things. So sanitary sewers are usually gravity, and you have manholes, and you have access, and you can go down the manholes, and you can access the sewer. This is under pressure because that entire flow from Lake Road at the entrance actually has to flow all the way down to the pumping station at the has to flow all the way down to the pumping station at the south end. So it's catching its speed as it's coming down, and it's making its way all the way to the south end, where it actually, a 21-inch comes down at Spring Lane and hooks into this 12 and goes down to the pumping station. So that was just something that we were not ready for. That was a curveball. But we took a good amount of time planning it and running different scenarios, and as I said, the team effort. We sat, I don't know how many hours, debating how to approach this thing, knowing that we cannot shut off sanitary flow. If we have a water main break, we can isolate that break. We can shut valves off. Sanitary sewers, we don't have valves on sanitary sewers. And it's live, it's live, and if it's under pressure, then that adds another fun curveball to it. So we're all set. We did a lot of work on it today, and tomorrow, we think everything's going to go well.
So when you say under pressure, that just means that it's flowing...
It's flowing very fast.
Because of gravity.
Very fast. And when it's under pressure, you cannot, you cannot have a manhole. Manhole would blow right off. So it's a sealed system all the way from Lake Road down to the pump station. And it's worked well. We've never had any problems with it. It's just, the smart thing to do is get it out of a huge hill of stone.
And then my other question is, would it be possible to, maybe, I don't know if other aldermen would be interested to see this under construction, would it be possible to get a tour of this?
I would love to give any of you a tour, anytime you would like, weekends, nights, whenever.
Well, I'm just wondering if you could set aside a certain time and, you know, throw out two or three dates when you could be prepared, because you don't want us wandering down there, you know, to take a look, so...
I would try.
Well, I've thought about it, frankly, but then, then when they say, you know, "Don't go down," I'm too obedient.
I was fortunate, I was out on my boat yesterday, and it was, the wind was good, so I was able to get very close to shore, and it's, it's a big project. I mean, that's just, I mean, the magnitude of this is substantial, and, you know, and...
And I would add that...
You can see the road quite clearly now.
I did take a tour of that with the facility manager down at the beach, Aaron Dalzah, and he took me out on one of the skiffs, and really looking at it from the lake, as George indicated, is a very unique perspective, and because we were in a motorboat, we were able to get close, get right in, and the scope of this project is just amazing. It's really impressive. But I too, like Alderman Rummel, I'd love to see if we could schedule a time to go down through there. I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd be happy to have our office coordinate that with Alderman.
I would say, I'm beginning to hear from constituents that they've snooped around and they've come back with how impressive it is, and asked us and Susan to, how can we publicize that for the rest of the community, because it's so remarkable.
The ravine is really turning out nice. Cliff has done a wonderful job designing the landscape with all that. It's going to be interesting on these two embankments, we can only bring in and put in six inches of black dirt. So as I asked Cliff the other evening when we were down at the ravine, tell me what is going to grow, 20, you know, 20 below zero, two inches of rain in an hour, 90-degree dry heat for six weeks, what's going to work? And he acknowledges the list of things is not too big, not too much, but we have the right person. Cliff, Cliff has got, he already has it all planned out. He knows what's going to go in, and he's ready to, ready to go.
And the topsoil, is that limited, because it would erode otherwise?
It would erode. So on a two-to-one slope, the most our engineer said was six inches. We've had that discussion. Cliff has pushed and asked for eight, and I don't know how many times, and the engineer has said six. That's it. Anything more, and we get a heavy rain, the whole thing goes. So we need that black dirt to hold itself in. So six inches is it.
Other comments and questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on what's going on with our beach parking situation. After very careful consideration and monitoring of the beach parking lot over the course of the weekends, the staff feels that we are able to reopen sale of South Beach Access permits for the lower south parking lot. Last weekend was a really great test of utilization, literally picture-perfect weather, warm water in the lake, and still we had a considerable amount of parking left over in the lot, and that tells us that there's room to sell a few more passes in that area. And the reason I say sell a few more passes is, I just want to remind you that the south parking lot has always been a permitted lot. It has never been just free and open use with your City of Lake Forest sticker, and we are trying to honor that lot that way this year. So with that being said, we are going to reopen the sale of the South Beach Parking permits, and we're going to prorate it to a mid-season price of $57. Those sales are going to begin Wednesday morning, July 17th, so this coming Wednesday, at 8:30 a.m. at the Recreation Center in our main office. And we feel that it is right and fair to limit the sale of those passes to one permit per household, so that we can get as many families down there to utilize that lakefront for the rest of the summer as we can. I just wanted to remind folks that our main entrance is undergoing some reconstruction that happens to start on Wednesday morning. So we just want to let everybody know that for their own sake, the main entrance to the rec will be blocked off, but the doors down to the south by the fitness center will be open, and then you can just come on in and come to the main, the main office. And I also want to remind folks that weekend parking for City of Lake Forest vehicle stickers and overflow parking will remain at Deer Path. So if you don't purchase a South Beach Access on the weekends and the remaining holiday, we will be shuttling from Deer Path. And that is our update for beach parking this year.
Questions?
So on a weekend such as this past one, how many people would you estimate were using that shuttle?
Oh, I do not have the count on that. I think the shuttle ran pretty well this weekend. I think it was continuous. And so, you know, the fact that we can utilize a little bit more space in that parking lot if people so choose to purchase a pass is a good thing, because I think some of those families would like the opportunity to not have to take the shuttle.
But it's been going pretty smoothly?
It goes, it goes pretty smoothly. It takes a little bit of time. You know, it's one shuttle, so if you get to Deer Path right when it's left, you've got a little bit of a wait, but we try to get it turned around as fast as we can.
And residents have been fairly understanding of the situation?
Uh...
Okay, forget that question.
Some have been extremely understanding and extremely supportive. I do want to say that. We have, we have some wonderful residents here. But it's a struggle. Everybody wants to use that beach, and it's a struggle, but we're almost, we're almost there, right, Michael Thomas?
Sally, are you doing Constant Contact?
Yes.
Constant Contact.
Yes, so this information...
People know about the Wednesday sale.
This information is scheduled to go out at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, and it will go out to the website. It will go out via Constant Contact to all of our households, who have given us their email addresses, and it will go out via social media.
Okay, good.
Sally, how many do you anticipate to sell? Is there a capacity threshold that you're looking at? And how do you manage expectations so people aren't disappointed that they didn't get one if they get notified?
We were pretty conservative when we went forward. There's 88 spots. We more than doubled the sale of spots, and they're not being used. So we will probably open it up, and, you know, if we get towards another 100, 150, we might shut it down, but right now, I think we're just going to let people utilize it. A lot of people use it at different times of the day. So, you know, I have folks that go from 8 to 11, and folks that go from, in the evenings, that don't even go in the height of the day. So we're going to, we'll monitor it, we'll keep an eye on it, but I'm not going to put a solid number of 75 passes and we're done, because I think we'll just continue to monitor, and if we get to a point where we think we've hit our capacity, we will let the community know that we're coming upon it, and we'll shut the sales down again.
You said Wednesday?
Wednesday morning.
What time, 8, 9?
8:30. Office opens at 8:30.
Thank you. I was down there yesterday, as I mentioned before, and was talking to the staff, and they were commenting on how unstressed they were yesterday, which was, actually, yesterday was one of the most beautiful days that I can remember in a long, long time, not even just this year. My sense was, I think people may have just decided to do something else with their beautiful afternoons, like go to Open Lands or something, because of the, because it's just not convenient to park, and I think it's been self, sort of self-correcting in that regard. That's just me guessing, but they seem to think that too, that some people turned around and just didn't come back.
And that's very possible. We want people to come back. We do have some events, I'm going to do a shameless plug now. We have some events coming up. This Friday is Christmas in July, so we're showing, I believe it's Happy Feet is the movie. Santa Claus is hopefully coming from the North Pole. And then we have a few, we have a couple concerts scheduled. For the concerts, we will be providing shuttle, just in case we can't get everybody in, but we encourage people to come down and use the facility, and we understand that it's a little bit stressful this year.
I also think not everybody realizes it's only restricted between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on weekends and holidays.
Correct.
The rest of the, the rest of the week, you know, the other 95% of the week, you can drive down there with your city sticker and park, and you don't need a special pass or anything, so... But your staff down there, both permanent and temporary, are doing a great job of managing people's frustrations and being very nice about it all, so...
Well, thank you, and I will definitely pass that message on.
Mayor, if I might add, I've actually spent a couple days down there with the kids up top, trying to manage resident expectations, and, you know, for the vast majority, everybody's very understanding. There are a few people who, who tend to get a little upset, but speaking to the professionalism of our staff and the directors down there, Aaron and Will and Lexi, and of course, Joe and Sally and their crew, they have been handling it exceptionally well, and I think we're at the halfway point now for the season, right?
Yes, we are.
I think Sunday was the halfway mark, and we're now in the back half, and given the unfavorable weather we've had, I know that they've been managing their budget, and it was budgeted for extra costs this year, but as needed when kids, when the part-time staff is not needed, they're sending kids home, you know, allowing them to work for a few hours, and if there aren't people showing up, they're managing our dollars wisely, and if the staff isn't needed, they're, they're sending them home, and some of these kids are more than happy to leave the beach on a day that it's raining. So, you know, thank you for your oversight and taking care of the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Great, and I would also just echo, you know, my appreciation for the professionalism of the staff down there. As I joked with Sally, I went down there just to check on them a week or two ago and thank them for their efforts, and in fact, I don't think any of them had a clue who I was, so... But nonetheless, seemed appreciative to hear the feedback, so really, they're doing a great job, and under tough circumstances, so. I had a couple tell me I was overdressed.
Do you have a city sticker yet?
What's that?
Do you have a city sticker?
It was during the week I had it, yeah. I told, yeah, I told them, "Don't you know who I am?" They said, "Yeah, we've heard that like 20 times today."
Sure you are.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's what they all say.
Another Jason showing up.
Just one last item. In light of the heightened, I think, awareness and sensitivity to stormwater issues, I just wanted to provide one informational update. Recently, the Illinois State Water Survey released updated statistical rainfall data to reflect the more frequent and increasingly severe rain events that we're having. And so just for the council and public's awareness, the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission will be holding workshops to present the increased rainfall data and providing any additional information and seeking feedback from the public. They have three workshops or dates scheduled. The first is tomorrow, July 16th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the City of Highland Park City Hall in the council chambers. The second meeting is Wednesday, July 24th, at 10:00 a.m. at Barrington Village Hall. And the third meeting is Thursday, August the 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Round Lake High School. And certainly want to make the council aware that city staff will be in attendance, but also just wanted to make the public aware as well. Unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
I'm going to inject one 30-second added item. Mike, could you give us a five-second update or a five, maybe a 30-second update on Old Elm and Timber?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Old Elm Storm Sewer Project is going very well. The Forest Hill Water Main has been installed. Half of the water services are in, the other half are going to start soon. 54-inch storm sewer on Old Elm is in. The 42 on Timber is, as of tonight, they were working late to hook up to the 21-inch on Forest Hill. So large pipe storm sewer-wise, everything should be in. Now they're jumping over to doing sort of the smaller items, some catch basins and some smaller storm sewer on Old Elm, but that project as well is going very well. I think concrete will come in probably in about two weeks, and then we'll see where we fall on Peter Baker's schedule. But as we said, definitely before school starts, we're hoping a few weeks possibly before that, so...
At some point, I think it'd be great to post pictures of the old pipes next to the new pipes. I happened to drive by and see that one day last week, because they happen to be on the ground next to each other. The difference between, was it 27 and 54?
Old Elm was a 27, is now a 54. Timber was a 24, is now a 42.
So, and I'm not good at this kind of math, but that's not just double. It's like, like a multiple ti, multiple time expansion. You could drive a small car through these 54-inch pipes, so...
It's going well.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is committee reports. Presentation from the Housing Trust Fund Board. I'd like to introduce an old, an old friend, Don Sean Hyder, who's now the chairman of the Housing Trust Board, and please, please provide our update.
You can tell I need a lot of coaching. Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
I know it can be a little intimidating, but try to be nice.
No question. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you very much for, again, having the opportunity to come in and briefly give you an update on what's happening relative to the Housing Trust Fund, as well as the activities of the Housing Trust Fund Board. Before I start, I wanted to mention that we as a community, and you as a city council, and thanks in great part to Kathy Zerniak and our amazing staff, are really a true example of what an inclusionary housing program should look like in a community of our size. We've done 28 units in this community that has had an enormous impact in the lives of those families that benefit from it. So I will tell you tonight, we should all be very proud of what we've accomplished, and I think we have a lot of exciting things going forward, but you as a council and we as a community should be very pleased and proud of what we've done so far. The Housing Trust Fund Board, by way of just background, is, then it was established in 2011. It's a recommending body to the city council, so we do not have officially a checkbook. And so, by the way, tonight, I'm going to be here at the end asking for more money. And our goal is really to use a multi-pronged approach, which we'll talk about to, whoops, to accomplish our inclusionary housing goals. Our Housing Trust Fund Board really is charged with monitoring our existing units, exploring partnerships with community organizations. I think Alderman Biderler mentioned this evening about the partnership and the success we've had at the beach, and the Community Partners for Affordable Housing, SEPA partnership we've had with them over the last several years is another terrific example of being able to partner with a group that really has great expertise, resources to capital, and allows us to really expand our reach and our base and our success, and we're grateful for the relationship we've had with SEPA and the ongoing support we've had. And then again, the idea of monitoring our efforts, and we'll talk about it in a minute, to expand our program and talk about some new senior cottage... to expand our program and talk about some new senior cottages at Grove Campus. So tonight, I'm asking on behalf of the Housing Trust Fund Board, a couple of different things. Number one, we'd like the council to authorize the renewal of our partnership with SEPA. As I mentioned, SEPA is a countywide northern Illinois organization that is charged with and is focused on looking for exclusion, inclusionary housing and unique opportunities to broaden our housing stock in the North Shore and particularly here in Lake Forest. We have had tremendous success, as I said, with 28 units here in the community. Our partnership with SEPA has helped result in eight individual, single-family homes. And the occupants and the residents of those homes range from single parents with kids, older folks who've been in town. I think the, the one home is still occupied by one of the softball coach and his kids at Lake Forest College, next to the college. So we've had a terrific relationship with them and very, very great success. We're in the middle of wrapping up our seventh and our eighth home with them and so tonight, I'm asking the council to authorize an expenditure, once opportunities are presented to the board, of not to exceed $330,000, so two units of 150,000, $150,000 each, and the ability to compensate SEPA for their oversight, management of the process, $15,000 per unit. The other thing we talked about briefly and I think is really important and very exciting is the opportunity to explore the idea of providing additional senior cottages here in Lake Forest. As many of you know, we have five senior cottages that were developed by Presbyterian Homes off of Telegraph near the train station on the west side. After a bit of a bumpy start, we learned a lot, we learned what worked and sometimes we learned what didn't. Those cottages are now under the management of community partners and they're doing an extraordinary job. And the demand for those senior cottages is literally off the charts. We have an extensive waiting list of residents that are looking to fill those and they don't turn over very often. So with the support of the Senior Foundation, the Senior Resources Commission, who has done a great deal of work, we have gotten to the point where we believe there is certainly justifiable need and an opportunity to construct some additional senior cottage units at Grove Campus. In the past, we've been somewhat reluctant to locate those cottages at Grove Campus, given what's kind of been viewed as the campus being a little bit remote. But now with all the activity happens at Dickinson Hall, the transportation options and the things going on there, we're really confident and very enthusiastic about the prospect of putting those cottages there. I want to again, recognize the Senior Foundation and the Senior Resources Commission, who have gone a long way in working not only to provide potential funding, they've written and, and achieved grants on a local and state level, and they have really pushed the ball forward and they've done a terrific job and I want to recognize their efforts as well. And so the Housing Trust Fund Board, after much consideration and a lot of discussion, is, has indicated and voted their support of additional senior cottages at Grove Campus. And we're asking the staff to continue to work on the necessary due diligence and we're going to continue to look for opportunities to move that ball forward. So tonight, the other thing we're asking for in addition to authorization of additional funding for up to two additional homes with a partnership with SEPA, is the board has voted to ask the council tonight to authorize up to an additional $350,000 to contribute toward the development of the potential senior cottages at Grove Campus. By way of background, initially, we looked at approximately five campus, or five units. We now are exploring potentially anywhere from eight to 10 with the idea of, again, the demand's very strong and if we can construct a few more, we'll also be able to obviously bring the cost per unit down, which we're very sensitive to as well. So, in partnership with the community groups, with SEPA and with funds from the Housing Trust Fund Board authorized by the council, we believe we have the pieces in place to move forward. It will probably be a year or so before we continue to get to the point where we're ready to move forward. The other piece of this is, the council needs to be aware and, and will, I'm sure, work closely with Kathy and with Jason. Part of the contribution of the city will also be to contribute the land into the project and we'll obviously go through that process as we need to as well. So, tonight, asking for authorization for two new homes with community partners, as well as authorization to spend up to $350,000 if and when we get to the point where we're prepared to move forward on the senior cottages. The last comment I would make is, as may be in your packet, we have just a little over a million dollars of uncommitted funds currently in the trust. If the council agrees tonight to approve the funding for the additional single-family homes, as well as funding for the senior cottages, we'll be in the $350,000 to $400,000 range. So, I think perhaps at some point in time, the council should think about and discuss with guidance from staff, how we continue to build the funds up in, in that trust fund again. We've had great success, Mr. Mayor, as you know, we've had the Laurel and Western project. We got 12 affordable units and over $600,000 in-kind contribution for that project. And of the 12 units, by the way, nine of them are leased. The only ones that aren't, ironically, are the one bedrooms. So, we've had great success with that, we've had great success with, with units with other developments, but I think we all feel strongly that we want to continue the success we've had, we want to continue to build on what we've done and what we've accomplished. So as we think about going forward over the next two, three, four, five years, we also want to think about how perhaps we replenish those dollars. And I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
So just to follow up on the cash reserve planning, I think it's really important to continue the commitment to this because it is such an important thing and part of our community. I'm just wondering if the board has earmarked other lands or done some planning about opportunities to help drive that, because, you know, these properties come on the market and we want to have enough money to act and be responsive, so it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg. But I'm just curious if there ever, if there's been an inventory of, of land and/or potential other sites in the future that look attractive, they've been ranked or anything, because to me, that's a, that'd be a great thing to do and help us drive our efforts. So just curious what your thoughts are.
Alderman, I would give you two answers to that. Number one is, we're always looking for those opportunities. I sent Kathy a note the other day about something I saw here in town and if any of you happen to see homes that are, pop up on the market that you think would be logical candidates, please send them to Kathy. The other thing that I think's really important, Alderman, is we have always and will continue to work with community organizations that I think will also play a critical role in providing housing opportunities here within the community. The hospital, the college, the academy. There are great opportunities to partner, again, back to Alderman Biderler's comment, with our great partners here in the community to help us achieve some things as well. So, we're on the lookout for all those and I think, as I mentioned before, I'm, not only asking for money tonight, but I'm also asking for us to think about how we continue to fund the program.
Alderman Biderler?
I would like to just comment briefly on the process because I was the liaison, actually during the time I served with Mayor Sean Hyder. So I guess it's been five years and Steve Potzek, who is here tonight, was the, was the chairman of the Senior Resources Commission almost all of that time. I think we served together for almost all that time. He did a terrific job, but I can speak to the process of coming to this and the foundation is represented tonight here as well, I know. It was a really solid, it was a really, certainly the support from the Housing Resource Fund is critical. I mean, there was never any question that that was going to be the critical step in terms of coming to council. But it was a really thorough process, a lot of discussion, not everybody, I mean, there were people, not everybody, Kathy is nodding, not everybody agreed partly, I mean, it's a beautiful part, I'll have to be candid with you, I really wasn't all that familiar with the senior center, although I've been eligible for some time to be familiar with it, but I, I wasn't. Did take Spanish there, so don't, don't ask me to have this conversation with you tonight in Spanish, but great, great programming. I'm just a huge fan of, of, of the senior center, but the, I feel like the discussion entertained a range of views. Not everybody was on board right away and Steve was pretty much the champion of this right from the start, but, but he let us talk it through and there was a concern that as beautiful as this part of town is, it was remote and, and finally, it just became clear that the need was strong enough and that the, there is, as Don mentioned, the transportation opportunities for seniors now, that that was, it was more important to get this done and figure that out and whether there would be, you know, of course, we also know that some of the, some of the delivery options for grocery stores are available and that there would be enough community there to provide the thing we thought might be, might be missing as a neighborhood. So, it was a pretty enthusiastic endorsement by the end, I think you would, you would agree, Steve. And so, but I just wanted to say, I, because I was part of those discussions from the time this came up. I mean, I was a liaison, I didn't vote, I didn't, oh, I guess I might have shared my view a time or so possibly, but it, it just, it felt like the right thing to do if we could make it happen and there were other view, and people were like, make it a different kind of building, don't make it, but, you know, so we just, we just kept talking and I'm, I'm really proud of the, of the, of the process you led, Steve, and the process that happened then at the Housing Trust Fund Group. Everybody was really thoughtful and mindful about coming to this conclusion, so I think it's exciting and I think it's needed. We talk, the whole mandate of the Senior Resources Commission is to, is to respond to need in the community and we know that it's an aging population, so we, frankly, people don't like to leave here if they don't have to. I mean, people like being able, they may want to downsize, but they don't want to leave, they want to, they want to be able to stay here. So, we want them to stay if possible and this is a great way to do it. So just endorsing the project and sharing my enthusiasm for what's, what's going to happen here.
Thank you. Next comment? Alderman Bushman?
I find it interesting, the concept of cottages at Grove and obviously, it's wonderful that you are creative and looking for opportunities and sites for that. Now, the Grove Campus is not one that has any residential and one of the questions I did have in looking at the material was how many cottages you were looking at and I think tonight you indicated initially five, but it may be expanded to eight or 10. Do you have plans to even have a broader residential community develop there at Grove? And also, in terms of the, you know, the, the land configuration, has someone looked at it and seen how it fits within the existing structure? I take it you're not looking at any changes in Sterling or any of the other buildings there? You'd use, as you described it, more north of the Dickinson Hall area, an open area there for the residential. Is there any thought of a, a second or third stage to this process?
Alderman, I think at this point, the answer, that's probably not. You know, tackling the next phase, the next five to eight to potentially 10, will be a pretty big job and it'll take a while to get accomplished. I think, I, I probably, Sally may have left me, she, I think Sally has some different, some ideas about what could happen at Grove, I'm sure Kathy does, I'm sure a lot of people in the community do. It's, it's a real, as Alderman Biderler said, it's a gem. It's a unique, very special place in Lake Forest. And so, I don't think the Trust Fund Board or staff envisions multiple phases at this point of that happening, but we see an opportunity to take a piece of it that candidly has been somewhat underutilized and being able to, to take advantage of the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Alderman Reel?
I'm trying to wrap my head around the process of budgeting and I'm, I guess, put off by the fact that we're being asked to put money aside now, to, to allocate money now, when I don't think we're going to need it in this fiscal year for this purpose. And so I'm, I'm trying to understand the process of allocation against budget and I'm also going to ask that we put more planning around future allocations so that this discussion doesn't happen in five years again.
Let me see, Alderman, if I can respond to both those. Number one is, I agree relative to your second point about planning for future allocations. That's the discussion I think it's important to have now and I think future allocations really go primarily toward continuing our relationship with SEPA and doing the individual one-off homes. The, the great question to your, or answer to your question or, or question about the allocation of the funds, the reason we're asking the council for the allocations of the funds tonight is that we need to have a placeholder for SEPA to go back to the government agencies and show a commitment today that the city has committed up to X number of funds so that they can continue their process, which probably won't be done until the end of the year. So, it's a little bit like the jigsaw puzzle, you've got to put all the pieces together to make it look like a picture. And fortunately or unfortunately, today, we really need the commitment from the council and the city to make our pick, piece of it be a part of the picture and that's why we're asking, and it does feel, and I, I had the exact same question when we first started talking about it, which is, you know, I think more linear, which is, how do I get from here to there? Why are we waiting so long, right? But unfortunately, it's a process, it's going to take some time, but that process will require us as a community to commit those funds even though we won't expend them right now.
So by committing the funds, we, we give the Housing Trust Fund the right to draw down those funds as needed. We don't have another opportunity to see use of funds statements.
As long as the council continues, commits to the $350,000 tonight for this project, subject to the project getting, moving ahead and, and happening, yes, those funds will be committed. That doesn't mean that something can't happen, that that will change and if that changes and the project doesn't go forward, then those funds obviously would come back into the trust and be able to use for something else.
So, for use of funds, once allocated, is there any city oversight of dispersments? Just as from a review function, I just, I, I know that we approved this before, I think it's a great idea, I'm totally on board, but I don't, I don't follow any processes that show me how the funds were used in the past, what they went to and what they will be used for in the future, under the new requests.
So on, on the individual, single-site homes, each of those opportunities is brought to the Housing Trust Fund Board for approval. And so we are the oversight vehicle, assuming the council has approved the funding, we are the oversight vehicle for the approval of that process. Brought to us by SEPA, we look at the numbers, we look at the demand, we look at the economic viability, we look at the construction costs that are associated with the rehab and the retrofit. So all those items, again, are under the oversight and the auspices of the Trust Fund Board. And again, relative to your question, Alderman, about the use of these funds as relates to senior cottages, this will be like any other construction project. It'll be monitored by the city, by city staff, by engineering, by building, by community development. So all of the, the people on staff that would typically touch a project like this, whether it's a senior project or a typical residential project, will, will be absolutely intently involved.
So for the senior cottages, Kathy Cerniak will be, will receive reports and be part of every discussion on fund dispersments? And on this, on the CPH part, SEPA partnership, those dispersments are made by the Housing Trust Fund with no oversight from anyone in the city?
I, I would, I would say that obviously Kathy is actively involved and attends and is engaged in every meeting and is directly involved with SEPA on any project, so I wouldn't say there's no oversight. She's about as good oversight as I've seen. When it comes to the dispersment of the funds for the senior cottages, again, that's going to be a process that will probably evolve a little bit, Alderman, so I don't know if, I'd love to give you an exact answer, but I can tell you that we'll be diligent about how, when, or if we spend those dollars.
I, I would request that the city, either the finance chair or how, whatever process we determine, receive a full accounting of any funds that are allocated by the city for any of these purposes.
Who writes the checks?
Just to provide a little bit more background, this is not the last time the city council will see this. If this project moves forward, if additional grants are obtained, if additional tax credits are obtained, if more partners join in with this effort, then we will come forward. The, the plan commission and the city council will need to review the subdivision.
Thank you.
I certainly would expect that at that point, before you approve a subdivision, we're going to come to you with a more detailed budget, clarification on what grants or tax credits have been obtained. And then, yes, I am in communication with Elizabeth Hollab. We did talk about the fact that we're asking for authorization to expend these funds now, knowing they won't be expended. She felt that it was appropriate for you to take that action. We actually, we- action. We actually would, will need to issue a letter of commitment to allow Community Partners for Affordable Housing to apply to Lake County for funding and to other organizations. So, this really is, as Chairman Schoenhyder said, almost said mayor there, Chairman Schoenhyder said, this really is a jigsaw puzzle. A lot of effort has gone in, Steve Potzick and others, to really try and put these pieces together. It, it doesn't always feel like we're going in the right order, but this is complicated. So, certainly, we hear your concerns. I would expect we'll be back before the City Council on a regular basis, perhaps with updates from the Housing Trust, and certainly with updates on overall budgeting for the project. Does that help to answer your question?
It does. And just to be clear, I'm very enthusiastic about this. I, I'm very excited about it. I, my mom is very active at the Senior Center and frankly, absolutely loves it, and I attribute it to her well-being, as I'm sure many of our, our residents and our neighbors see. But I just, I think we, we do have the duty to ourselves as, as residents, and certainly to City Council, to have, have oversight of, of funding. So, I just would like to see it.
And Alderman, I would say, just to reinforce Kathy's comment, I think if anything, we do a lot of things really well in the community. We're very process-focused.
I know.
And I think that process is very good and very complete and very succinct. And as Kathy mentioned, Plan Commission, if there's a Building Review Board review, and certainly keep you, I see Alderman Bushman shaking his head from our old days, you know, certainly keep you, as a council, informed with the progress, because it's important, as you said, we need to understand if those funds are allocated, are allocated, Alderman Preschlag said, or if not, those come back, as it relates to kind of maintaining the funds in the Housing Trust.
Thank you.
And I suspect when you deal with the land transfer issue and come back to us for that, that'll be better defining what it is we're dealing with.
Absolutely, Alderman.
Maybe it would be helpful to just tick off, and I don't know how comfortable you are, so I understand there may be some things you want to keep a little vague, but, because certain commitments might not be there. But there are, there is a litany of participants in this project. The city is just one player here. And, and it's, it's actually very exciting to see this coming together. And if you could maybe give a little more color to that, that would be probably helpful.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm, I'm old, so I don't remember everything. But I, I will tell you, as, as we mentioned, the Senior Foundation with Steve and, and members of the Foundation have been actively involved, and there is a commitment, a significant financial commitment from the Senior Foundation. SEPA has also stepped up, as well as there is a variety, a litany of tax credits, tax benefits, state and regional dollars that can accrue to not only Northern Illinois, but also Lake County. And that's why, and that's about the extent of the knowledge of my list, but I can tell you, as Kathy mentioned, as you said, the list is very long. And so, we're a part of that list, we're on that list, but we're by no means at the top of the list.
And there are a couple of, there's at least one yet to be named player that, that I'm aware of that could be a substantial supporter for this. So...
Thank you.
Remember, it's not just called the Lake Forest Senior Center. So, Melody?
I'm just trying to, and I was a little confused when I was reading the write-up. I'm trying to understand exactly what we're being asked to approve tonight in terms of expenditures. And there was also a copy of the agreement, whether, I think it was SEPA that was in our packet. Are we appro, I, I, just if you could clarify, A, the dollars we're authorizing tonight, and are we also agreeing to the, so if you could just please clarify that for me?
Happy to, Alderman. So, tonight, we're asking for really three things. Number one, we're asking you to reauthorize our partnership with SEPA, with Community Partners for Affordable Housing, to help continue to work as a partner with them as we go through the process of identifying, developing, and monitoring the inclusionary housing components here in the community.
So, if I can interrupt. Now, that agreement I hadn't seen before, but has it been reviewed by our council?
And, and that agreement has actually been approved before. This is an extension of an agreement that you approved previously.
Thank you.
And then, the second thing is, is up on the board. We're asking for the council to authorize expenditures from the trust not to exceed $330,000 for the next two acquisition opportunities. Those are to be identified. But again, much like Alderman Moreno mentioned, we want to make sure if the opportunity is there, very often, we have to respond very quickly. And so, we need to know those funds are allocated, and then, as a part of that $330,000, our agreement with SEPA is that we pay them a $15,000 fee to manage the acquisition, to manage the rehabilitation and construction project, and monitor the qualification status of the potential buyers. And then, number three, the final one, is the commitment to allocate up to $350,000 toward the future construction of the senior cottages at Grove.
So, there are three separate...
So, $730,000?
There are two motions. Well, and remember, these are, these are, these are funds coming from a foundation...
Right.
...that are allocated for this purpose already. So, this is just the, the implementation of what we've spent the last 15 years trying to get done and had great success. So, you know, I think...
I'm, I'm just trying to get the total amount. So, it's $730,000 that we're being asked to authorize you to expend.
$680,000.
Yeah, it's $680,000.
$680,000, okay.
So, if there are more, no more comments from the council, I would invite public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this? Yes, sir.
If I just want to...
Could you speak up, up to the microphone and introduce yourself and...
My name is Steve Potzick. I'm the immediate past Chair of the Senior Resources Commission. The Lake Forest Lake Bluff Senior Resources Commission, a by municipal commission. And also, I'm the current Vice President of the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Senior Citizens Foundation. And I just wanted to comment, because a lot has been said about the partnerships here, and Prue has been an extremely effective liaison. When I first arrived at the commission a number of years ago, we did have a liaison from the council, but didn't see the person too often. A Prue goes to almost all of our meetings. She's extremely helpful in her wisdom, her counsel, and the ability to share other opinions, which has been very, very helpful. Also, I, I need to say Kathy, without Kathy's support, we wouldn't have known what steps to take care of. You know, we're, we're a lay commission. We don't have that professional expertise. I happen to be a pediatrician, so why am I involved with seniors now, you know? So, I don't have that kind of expertise. Also, Sally, who's in the back of the room, without Sally's support as well, who supervises the Senior Center, we wouldn't have gone anywhere. Because, of course, seniors, Sally's is involved and talks about the future of Grove Campus. So, without that kind of staff support, we wouldn't have been where we are today. And then, lastly, hopefully, I'm not leaving some people out. Lastly, Paul Lemieux, who's here, who's the President of the Senior Citizens Foundation. Without Paul's support, I can tell you, we would have not gone anywhere. There was resistance initially in the foundation about, should we be spending this amount of money at this time on a project that's kind of unusual for us? But the commission's job, it was stated, is the commission's job is to try to determine the unmet needs of seniors in our communities, and then make reasonable recommendations for those needs. And throughout this process, every single time the commission has met, we've always heard about the needs for affordable housing for seniors. And what was mentioned, Community Partners for Affordable Housing does have a waiting list, and they recycle the waiting list frequently, because seniors move, die, what have you. And right now, I was told that they have 40 people, 40 people on that waiting list for affordable housing. So, anything we can do to expand that housing opportunity, to give people, give seniors the opportunity to stay in the community is phenomenal. And I must say that based upon Paul's, again, support, part of the partnership is that the Senior Citizens Foundation is pledging up to $350,000 for this project. In addition, I was fortunate enough to get some grants from a Chicago foundation for $100,000 in addition to that. So, it is truly a partnership, and I just wanted to thank the, the council's time.
Thank you for your time and commitment to making the Senior Center what it is. Any closing comments from the council? Okay. Any other members of the public? I'm sorry, I assumed that there were none. Okay, hearing none. I would ask for a motion to direct the city manager to update and extend the agreement with Community Partners for Affordable Housing, first, and second, to authorize expenditures in an amount not to exceed $330,000 for the purchase and rehabilitation of two additional single-family homes over a period of 24 months from the date of the agreement.
Some move?
Do I have a second?
Roger.
Then we need a roll call vote?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Pity. And another motion that I would request is to support the construction of five to 12 senior cottages at the Grove Campus, and one, authorize a contribution of up to $350,000 from the Housing Trust Fund contingent on the participation of other parties, partners, grants, and project support from other sources. And two, indicate general support for transferring a parcel of land at Grove Campus for the senior cottages, and authorize appropriate due diligence to be completed in preparation for future, future council action on the land transfer. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Another roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. This is a, this is a great step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman, for your support.
And I hope it comes together.
We do, too. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the city's annual appropriation ordinance. Diane, I think, will be presenting that to us. Actually, let me, let me restate what I read. It's consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2020 and approval of rollovers. And this is a final reading.
Opening the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. City staff is requesting final approval of the fiscal '20 appropriation ordinance. The first reading was approved by the City Council on the June 17th agenda. Since that time, the rollover list has been finalized and reviewed and has been included in your packet. This includes the budget that was approved at the April 15th meeting, the rollover list, plus a 10% contingency. And it's a state statute that this be approved, but before the end of July, and then filed with the county. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the City Council for Diane? Okay. And then, I would ask for any comments from the public on this matter? When do I close the public hearing? Should I close the public hearing?
Either the vote will close it, or you can just close it.
Okay. I think I'll close it.
That's fine.
And then, I would ask the City Council approve, consider approval of the final reading of the ordinance and the rollovers.
Some moved.
And then, we have a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. And now, now, now for some really good news. I am, we are presenting for the council's approval, an additional $3 million transfer in fiscal year 2019 from the General Fund to the Capital Improvements Fund. It's going to be presented by Alderman Morris, Finance Chair.
Very good. Just a little bit of history on this. The current April 30th fund level general fund balance is 28.3 million, and the general fund revenue budget is 36.6 million. Those are relevant, because many years ago, the City Council passed a policy requirement that the general fund balance should be a minimum of 35% of the revenue in any one year. So, in this case, that would be $14.5 million is the minimum balance in case of rainy day fund, if you want to call it that. But over time, through obviously careful budgeting and good stewardship, that fund balance has grown repeatedly through the years, to the point where it's now 28.3 million. That's 77% of the projected fiscal 2020 revenue. I think, and I, and I hope you do, too, that that's sufficient to meet the potential rainy day needs of the city in the foreseeable future. So, I'm recommending that we transfer the fund balance, the excess fund balance, additional $3 million over to the Capital Improvement Fund, so that the Public Works Committee and the city staff can allocate those funds to appropriate capital projects in the near future. It also is a one-time, it's not a recurring event. We can review this each year, year in and year out, make the recommendation, or not in the future year. So, this is a one-time event.
How does this relate to the close of the fiscal year? Any surplus that we generated? Is there a fairly good correlation between those two?
Well, the surplus that we generated is in that chart. You may have seen it in the $5.6 million surplus.
Right.
That was in the package. So, that entire surplus, we had already allocated 2.6 of that, so we're adding 3 million for the total surplus transfer of 5.6 million.
Which is for the completed fiscal year, right?
Just for this year, correct.
And this would otherwise have been added to the fund balance...
Correct.
...at the end of the year, pushing us up well into the 80% of, of revenue kind of number. So, but instead, we'll keep it the same as last year. The fund balance won't go up.
Right.
The surplus is being transferred to capital projects.
Right. Any questions?
We have a five-year unfunded capital project schedule?
We sure do.
No.
And I think the, I defer to the city manager, but I think he has plans to start with the city staff, working with the Public Works Committee.
Correct. That, that will be updated. And as briefly discussed at the last workshop, and, and as envisioned in, in mid to late September, at the next City Council workshop, I think a broader conversation about long-term capital financing and the strategy behind it would occur. That will hopefully provide appropriate direction to staff in anticipation of the November capital workshop, where we then could talk specific projects.
Well, looking at the surplus, it has building permit revenue of 1.1 million listed as one-time. I mean, don't we have ongoing building permits? Is that a special?
That's a special.
Yeah.
We absolutely have ongoing permit revenues. The, the dollars that you're looking at are linked to, partly to the hospital project and partly to the Bears project. We don't anticipate projects of those magnitude. We, we may be surprised, but we want to be cautious in that area.
Okay. So, interest income of a half a million, if interest rates, if the Fed cuts interest rates, that could be elusive next year as well. Income tax distributions from the state, that's, that's a wild card. So...
Exactly.
You're comfortable with this one-time?
This is a one-time.
Okay, that's good.
And we'll revisit it. Maybe we'll do it in the future, maybe we won't.
Yeah.
And I would...
And I would add, this is a point of clarity on some of those. Those figures represent the variance. So the building permit collections were 1.1 million above forecasted revenue. So we do have worked in that base, you know, an established.
I guess devil's advocate would ask, what happens if we end up 2, 2.5 million in the hole next year where expenses have exceeded revenues?
Sure. Well, obviously, we do our best in conservative financial planning to hopefully avoid a deficit of that magnitude, albeit recognizing that there are always unforeseen events. But I think, you know, to the credit of the city council, that's exactly why we have a fairly healthy reserve in place. So we're able to weather that storm and then make necessary adjustments if need be as we go into the next fiscal year.
I mean, our target by policy is a 35% reserve and we have a 77% reserve.
We have a cushion on a cushion.
Yeah, sure. And that's prudent, I think, given the uncertainties in the environment around us, but.
I mean, I just think about the pension obligation. If we get a down market here, that number's going to change substantially.
Well, I think it's premature to assume that all of this $3 million or $6 million is going to go straight into the ground. I mean, there are other priorities, so, and that could very well be one of them.
Right.
And I would add, too, that, you know, I think to the mayor's point, certainly, this is great news for the city. I'm not sure this is a number we can count on in future years. There were a lot of unique anomalies that all contributed to a number of this magnitude. But I would say, again, I think to Alderman Morris's point, that, you know, I think moving forward, if the council is comfortable with current reserve levels, there is certainly some sound logic in considering transferring surpluses on an annual basis into other funds where those resources may be needed. It certainly mitigates any concerns with the rating agencies that can exist if you draw down reserves by any significant amount in a short period of time. So still, again, a great opportunity to address other needs within the community without jeopardizing the city's bond rating.
Yeah, I would say we can all expect a very lively discussion about how this capital gets allocated.
And I do have a question for Alderman Morris. Policy is for that reserve to be at a minimum of 35%. What do our sister communities have? What are their policies? I'd like to.
Good question.
Have a benchmark.
Personally can't answer that, but Diane, if you could talk with Elizabeth when she returns and we'll come back to you with a summary of that. We'll do some due diligence in Highland Park and the other communities.
Elizabeth is encyclopedic about these kinds of things, so we're missing her a bit here tonight.
That's a good question.
Right. And we can look at information both in terms of policy and then also actual reserves because there are, as we can attest to, in many communities, there is a variance between what the stated minimum in a policy is versus what actual reserves may be.
I will tell you that I spoke with my peer in Womet and they have a huge stormwater problem to the tune of $100 million of sewer replacement based on their aging infrastructure that they've never attended to. So it's probably going to be all over the map in terms of what is out there, but that's a good question.
It may just offer us some guidance.
Yeah. And I'm trying to remember when, I think I was around when that policy was set or shortly thereafter. It hasn't been that long. And there was a great deal of discussion and a great deal of looking at comparable communities and rating agency considerations and so forth. So I think you'll get a good, I think you'll be pleased with the answer, but, you know, and then the fact that we've got it more than doubled is, you know, I think is a bell and suspenders, which is what we need.
George, you've been around since the city charter.
Practically. Sometimes I'm accused of that. Just add 100 years to my age.
Lucky for us.
Yeah.
Well, it would be sort of interesting to know whether these increased significantly just in the past several years or were we running closer to a 35% number five years ago, 10 years ago? Have there been certain factors that have added to our increase and what might those have been? You know, what's our trend been, in other words?
Yeah, it'd be good, I mean, worth looking at the trend. I mean, the factors are careful budgeting and consideration of the risk we've been facing through the last decade.
Without being able to quote it factually, I think it's been just a steady.
Yeah.
Chunk, 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 chunk.
And it's been very intentional.
It doesn't seem like it's a big surge one year and not the next. It seems every year because of the careful budgeting and stewardship, it's just, there's been that excess reserve each year. But Diane and Elizabeth can give us a spreadsheet on that.
Excuse me. I would add that it's been an intentional insurance policy against state actions also and to our benefit.
Absolutely. Opportunity for public, members of the public to discuss this matter or present any opinions on this? There being none, I would entertain a motion to approve an additional $3 million transfer in fiscal year 2019 from the general fund to the capital improvements fund.
Some moved.
Wait a second. Okay. And it's a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the council about a non-agenda item? There being none, I'm going to move on to the items for omnibus vote consideration. There are 14 of them. I'm sorry, there are 13 of them. One's been removed for the moment. The first is approval of the June 3rd, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the June 17th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Third is approval of the July 1, 2019 city council workshop meeting minutes. Number four is approval of the check register for May 25th to June 21st, 2019. Fifth is approval of a three-year contract extension with Lake Forest Bank and Trust for banking services. Number six is award of a contract with TKB Associates to purchase software and services for an electronic content management system as budgeted in fiscal year 20 in the capital plan. Number seven is approval of the use of the remaining $170,460 water plant project contingency for a three-year extended performance warranty with GE Suez, year one and two paid from project contingency of $64,000. Analysis and oversight of said warranty with design engineer Strand Associates, $16,750. Extension of a driveway concrete wall with Schroder Concrete, $32,000, and driveway resurfacing with Schroder Asphalt of $65,000. That's all one thing. Number eight, approval of a contract with Baxter and Woodman Consulting Engineers to provide phase-one engineering design services for the Waukegan Road and Wesley intersection improvements project in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Number nine, city council approval for a five-year extension of the current landfill disposal fee agreement with advanced disposal. Number 10, ratification of a purchase of a police-marked vehicle previously approved by both the finance committee and the public works committee chairman to Morrow Brothers Ford in the amount of $35,985. The 11th, which is listed as 12th because the 11th is being pulled, so I guess I'll just keep going and say it's 12. Consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the building review board, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. 13, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. And 14th, approval of the city of Lake Forest member contribution funding for the closing design and renovation costs associated with the purchase of the North Suburban Special Recreation Association facility. Any items that any members of the council would like to have removed and discussed independently? Okay, thank you. Then I would call for a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor, oh, roll call vote, sorry.
It's modified, right?
It's modified, correct. It's modified to eliminate number 11, which I'm told will be brought back at our August, what is that, August 5th meeting?
Some moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. We're getting to the end here. There are only two items, two and a half items left. The first is authorization. It's new business. There are no ordinances to consider. New business authorization for the city to participate in a pilot community solar program and engage MC Squared Energy Services LLC in a community solar subscription agreement. This will be presented by Mike Strong, the assistant to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council.
Thirty seconds.
I'm happy.
You have 30 seconds.
I could probably make that work.
Just kidding.
Yeah. I thought it would be maybe good to just start with some quick background here. Introduce the concept of community solar and then introduce an exciting pilot project that the city has been approached to participate in, that we're seeking concurrence from the council on this evening. So I think to start, you know, what do we mean by community solar? And I think an apt analogy is that of community-supported agriculture or CSAs. You know, in a CSA arrangement, you have residents or members of the public that are interested in supporting a farm, but they don't have the means to produce crops locally. They don't have space, they don't have a field or what have you. They're subscribing to have in-season fruits and vegetables arrive on their doorstep or to be able to pick them up. And community solar is a very similar concept. Those individuals that are really interested in promoting solar energy that don't have the infrastructure, that don't have the investment capabilities, maybe the means to develop panels or install panels, can do so by investing in solar farms off-site that support solar energy in the grid that supply their home or small business. And so this is sort of just a diagram of what that looks like. So on the left here, you have a farm, a solar farm. That solar farm produces solar energy either through building top solar panels, through field panels that are installed in fields, and they're generating electricity to put into the power grid. In our case, Commonwealth Edison is the power grid that we subscribe to. And that energy, you know, or if we're continuing the CSA analogy, those crops are available to the public to be purchased and in exchange, ComEd then supplies that energy to our property. And we do that through this subscription to the community solar farm. But in Illinois and through the community solar program that exists here, ComEd will say, if you're willing to subscribe to clean energy, we're willing to give you some on-bill credits to reduce your energy costs. And those on-bill credits reduce the net cost of energy for the subscriber. So that's just a simplified way of explaining sort of how this program works. But, you know, this isn't a new concept throughout the nation. Illinois is actually the 41st state to really adopt these, this opportunity. And it did so through federal legislation. The Federal Employment Jobs Act enabled this and with some lofty goals, namely some of the renewable energy goals that they've set forth, wanting to double essentially the amount of renewable energy in the power grid by 2025. So community solar was seen as an opportunity for them to be able to promote solar, to promote clean energy, and offer incentives for residents to do that. I would say it's also opened up a lot of regional opportunities, two that I'll talk about briefly tonight that has led to this program. So you can see here just a couple examples. You can have vacant land that is developed with panels or, of course, the rooftops. And these regional opportunities or programs, you know, are really starting to take shape throughout the state, but locally as well, just in the North Shore region. The city of Lake Forest, this isn't a new concept for the city here. We've participated in a national designation program through the Solar Foundation. We've hosted engagement forums on the topic. Some may recall, back in 2011, we established we were a founding member of the North Shore Electricity Aggregation Consortium, which is made up of seven other communities in the North Shore here to promote the municipal aggregation program. That group meets regularly, we meet quarterly, to investigate regional opportunities to not only promote cost savings opportunities, but also to explore these types of programs, regional investment opportunities in renewable energy. And then the last item here, we've been a part of the Greenest Regions Compact. Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus has launched a program, the Solar Clearinghouse Solution Program, which essentially is a community solar engagement opportunity, a joint procurement opportunity whereby the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus has offered an opportunity to really streamline subscription programs for municipalities that don't have the means to invest in rooftop solar or don't have vacant land to develop with panels. So this was seen as an opportunity for us in Lake Forest to promote solar energy and participate in the benefits that community solar can provide. And so a part of that program was to conduct an assessment. The city of Lake Forest has about 35 ComEd accounts. And to start in this program, we did an analysis of which ones were going to be eligible. And the eligibility of those accounts really depends on the value of the subscription that energy can bring to a developer. We have about 25 or about two-thirds of our accounts were found to be eligible. The collective use within those accounts was about 1.5 million kilowatt hours. So I threw on some fun little icons here, but if we were to enroll all of the eligible city accounts in community solar, we could potentially be offsetting 1.2 million pounds of coal that's being burned. About 200 single-family homes could provide energy. You know, 48,000 trash bags of waste could be recycled instead of landfilled. And so I think that really puts into perspective some of the regional, local impact that engaging some of our city accounts, and these are municipal accounts, you know, the municipal buildings, city hall, public safety, fire stations, Dickinson Hall, traffic lights, street lights, electrified gas lights. You know, all of those are city accounts that we pay ComEd to electrify. And so those are the accounts that we're talking about here that, you know, would be eligible. Large accounts, generally municipal accounts are pretty attractive, right? They're full-time, they're on all the time, they rarely cease operations, and they have, you know, load that's pretty consistent. So now that comes with a caveat. Larger accounts aren't as attractive because there's not really that large of incentive, there's a cap for the amount of subscription value that can have. So for municipal services building, for example, large account, but it's not really an attractive from a subscription standpoint because there's only a certain amount that ComEd's going to credit us back for that. So what we had to look at was smaller accounts like city hall, Dickinson Hall, fire station two, LOA Farm, a portion of that. Those accounts are a little more attractive, small to medium use, that can offer incentives which, when you net all those together, we could be, this could be a net incremental decrease in our costs each year of about $5,000 to $15,000. We spent about $50,000 or so on electricity, you know, spread across 20 years. I mean, that could be substantial amount of funds that we preserve while also promoting renewable energy. So that brings us to the opportunity that we're going to talk about this evening. As a member of the North Shore Electric Aggregation Consortium and the Greenest Regions Compact, we've been approached by the state of Illinois's first community solar developer. This is located in Elgin, Illinois. It's a 900-kilowatt facility. It's being brokered by MC Squared Energy Solutions, which is who we're seeking to engage in this agreement with. MC Squared, you may recall, is a broker that we actually worked with with our first municipal aggregation program. They were, we were with them for three years. They provided us 100% clean energy through that program. Not all that energy was being supplied from Illinois developers, but, you know, that said, our relationship with MC Squared, we do have a history working with them. They're very professional. I think they're somewhat of a leader in this industry in Illinois. And so they've brought forth an offer, you know, to subscribe one of our accounts in a pilot subscription program that offers some fairly attractive terms. They would be guaranteeing us on that subscription essentially a 10% discount. They would be guaranteeing us on that subscription essentially a 10% discount on the ComEd rate that we pay currently. And that includes any purchased energy adjustment, so it could be a fluctuating rate depending, but, but they would be offering us that opportunity to benefit financially. It'd be a 20-year term. However, since we're, we've negotiated a pilot program, we do, we had, we did negotiate a waiver of any penalty fees and early termination if we just feel like this isn't the right program for the City of Lake Forest. Based on the capacity of this facility, we're estimating, because there's about four other communities right now that are interested in participating with the city, a cap of about 130,000 kilowatt hours. So that'd be important based on the next slide, but, you know, we'd equally divide up the capacity in this facility to share among the subscribers. So, and then Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus would help assist with, with all the billing support. So we would be able to enroll a city account that's eligible in this subscription and we could potentially see some savings. So what is that, that impact? And I apologize for the chart being small, but based on the 25 accounts, and I had indicated there were four that we felt were eligible for consideration here. City Hall, this building, Fire Station Two, Dickinson Hall, and Elloa Farm. You can see on the table here that their average uses varies, but when you, when you look at a capacity of about 130,000, we wanted to concentrate on one account that had at least an average annual supply requirement of at least 130,000 kilowatt hours. So we narrowed in on these four accounts. And so the, the column to the right of that indicates essentially what our current costs are to electrify these buildings. So that's based on the current ComEd default rate. So right now, city hall, for instance, is, is on average, the value of the cost that, of the supply that comes in is, is just over $10,000. Based on the terms of the agreement that's been proposed, we could reduce that amount by about $1,000. So that would be the credit that ComEd would give us for engaging in a pilot or in a community solar subscription program. So the delta between the 10,000 and the 1,000 essentially is what we'd pay another supplier. So much like municipal aggregation, you're entering into a separate supply agreement with a separate supplier, similar to this. We'd be paying MC Squared about $9,050 a year for supply, but ComEd would then also be giving us a rebate or a credit in that amount. So our total net cost for electricity will go down. Now, this isn't a windfall, but I just, I'm trying, I'm saying that to illustrate sort of how the subscription would work and how we'd benefit from the subscription program. You know, our recommendation is to, to consider the city hall account here, you know, for a variety of reasons, but to explore how this program works. We think it's a, it sends a great message, it's a great opportunity for us, and I think brings with it these other benefits. You know, not only is there low market risk here because we're being guaranteed savings, we're also being afforded the opportunity to opt out of this agreement at any time, but we're supporting renewable energy deployment. We're being able to partner with some, some communities in the North Shore here to engage in a pilot program to promote community solar, which you think is a good thing, and which actually forwards some long-range planning that this city is engaged in and supports through the sustainability plan and the, the strategic plan. So with that, sort of some next steps as we look ahead. Right now, there is a legal review being undertaken on the agreement. The substantial changes or the substantive terms that, that we've reviewed earlier are incorporated within that. But that will be, that's underway now. Really what we're looking for tonight and from this, from city council this evening is concurrence and direction to continue to pursue this opportunity to promote community solar, engage MC Squared in this pilot program, as well as to support staff's recommendation in subscribing to city hall account to be able to learn more about some of the benefits of community solar and, and promote this opportunity in, in the region. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd also like to introduce Mark Pruitt. He's with the Power Bureau. He is a consultant with the North Shore Aggregation Consortium. Be happy to answer any questions he may have on economics or some of the numbers, but with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions? Alderman Moreno?
Would you talk to the downside risk in this subscription agreement? In the event that production doesn't go as planned or the operating company has any issues, is there any, any risk of look-through to the city to make up some difference or extend our expected payback period? Any, any cost to us?
You know, the, off the top of, and we talked a little bit about this at the, at the consortium, I mean, there's some administrative costs, right? This is a pilot program. So this is new, not just to the city, but also to the developer and the state of Illinois. So there may be some unforeseen consequences or, you know, costs in terms of, of implementing the program, but, you know, with having, you know, early termination, no penalty, you know, we've really minimized some of those, those risks. And, and, you know, if that were to be the case, we opt out, we get, we're just applied with ComEd. You know, there's sort of no, no issue there. And I think they viewed this as an opportunity to really explore, since this is the first program available, how this would work, you know, through this arrangement. So they're willing to take some of that risk on by offering some of these attractive terms, quite honestly.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Rommel?
Since this is a pilot program, I'm a little confused about why this is a 20-year agreement.
I might have to kick it to Mark on the, on the link, but a lot of this has to do with revenues to support these developers. So subscription agreements are built for long-term revenue potential and, and opportunity. So the community solar programs need to sustain the developers. So the term lengths, I think, for build-in some, or minimize some of the short-term risks, so if they're only having five years of the capital, the land acquisition, the taxes, the fees, all of those costs have to be recovered through state incentives or subscription agreements. So 20 years may seem like a long time, but for a developer that has land, assets, you know, equity that they're, they're having to pay back, I think that's why the terms are that, that long.
Is there anything?
I think that's a very great, very good question to ask. My name is Mark Pruitt, by the way, and thank you for the invitation to be here this evening. The 20-year term is fairly common in the solar industry. The life expectancy of the solar panels and the installation is typically between 30 and 40 years. The construction of the projects is generally financed over a 20-year term, much like a mortgage. So the idea of the subscription payments is that there's a constant revenue stream that's coming in to support maintenance, panel replacement, property taxes, land leases, and the other operating expenses that are associated with solar. Don't want to contradict the folks in the solar industry, but solar is not free. It's still equipment. It's equipment that's outside and it has to be maintained. So really, the subscription revenue stream is there to provide the ongoing support to ensure that the, the plant is operational and delivering an optimal outputs during its life.
But we would hope that this program would expand within that 20-year period. I mean, it's potentially, we'd all be totally solar by, in 20 years or something, right? So how would that change the terms of this agreement?
Well, the terms of this agreement is simply for this one project. This is the first project of its kind. There are 76 other similar projects that have been approved for development in northern Illinois. None of those projects have yet been built, but we expect them to come online starting in 2020 and 2021. Part of my job with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, that's the connection here, is that we are seeking to pool together municipalities to serve as anchor tenants, more or less, for as many of these projects as possible so that they can move forward to construction and start to move that transition towards that, that cleaner energy generation in northern Illinois. So I think you're right. The market will change. There will be more of these assets online, but to get an asset, just like building a home, there has to be a long-term commitment. Someone has to step forward. And what we've tried to do under this type of an agreement, which we believe is going to be replicable, is that we want the municipalities to not be at risk. So these, the 10% discount, the no cancellation, no termination fee clauses, those are all things that we really want to have in there for the municipalities.
Those are very favorable terms.
Any other questions?
I have one, which is, at what stage of this process do individual homeowners have the opportunity to participate?
Yeah, so as Mark mentioned, there are more coming. We think 2020, 21, we'll start to see more, I want to say solicitations, but you'll start to see more opportunities for you and your home and residents and those listening at home will have opportunities to subscribe to projects that come online. A lot of this too, and Mark didn't mention, this developer in Elgin hit the market at the right time. I mean, he, he took a lot of risk. He built solar a couple of years ago, applied for the permit and was granted it. So he had already built, had already invested and sort of, so we're, we're hitting this opportunity, I think, at the right time, but in the next 18 to 24 months, we'll start to see more opportunities come, come online, as he, as he's mentioned. So stay tuned, they're coming and, you know, this is something that will help, you know, ComEd achieve their goal of, I think, a 25% renewable energy portfolio by 2025. This all sort of helps contribute to that.
Thank you. Any members of the public that would like to speak or opine on this subject? Okay. There being none, we've got two, two different motions here. The first is approval of an agreement subject to final review by the city attorney and the city manager with MC Squared Energy Services LLC, an amount estimated at $9,297 per year to participate in a pilot community solar subscription program. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Prashlak?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. That motion carries.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda is additional items for discussion slash comments by council Do I have anybody who would like to speak about anything? There being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The meeting has been adjourned.